Do you want to do the? How long is 12? Wait a second, wait a second, Patrick.
Okay.
Good hair day. It looks great. I was like looking, I was like, her hair looks so good. I was focusing on your content, but I was also like, her hair looks good.
Not to be.
Oh, do you?
Just kidding.
That's the start of a long, I can tell Matt and Danielle, you want me to tell them? All right, just say.
I like the green.
I'm Jim Metzger.
Hey, good to see you.
Nice to meet you in person.
I've seen you around. Now we can put face with name. We had a phone call. Thank you.
Oh, do we have two, wait, should we put Scott and Amy at the dais?
Yeah.
Because we have two guys.
I think if they don't come in, I don't think, right?
Sounds good to me. Thank you very much. It's a longer conversation.
So I shouldn't go too intense? Got you. I think there's some people here for the dad in the back. There are people here about the dad.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Hastings and Hudson Board of Education for November 19th, 2024. I want to welcome everybody. We've got a big audience tonight. In, because of the big audience, we're going to make a couple of small changes to the agenda. Just please note, we start off with two presentations tonight. We're just flipping the order of those presentations. So we're going to have the B one first on disaggregated data. The bond will come second. And in respect to everybody's time here, public comment is going to move up immediately after that. So we'll have the two presentations, then public comment will start directly after that. So, thank you. So do we want to frame up the first, so we're going to start with the disaggregated quantitative indicators and outcomes of academic performance. Tonight, taking us through that is going to be Dr. Shizamansky. And you can, off you go, or?
Ready to go.
Okay.
So it's my pleasure to present to you tonight the disaggregated data. This is part two of what we did earlier this year around our data presentation around the state of the district. I would like to begin by thanking a number of people. So first, I would like to thank Amy Casas, Scott Winn here tonight, Andy Kleiman, for all of their input and collaboration on designing this and culling all of the data and reflecting on all of the data. I would like to thank Adriana Boudreaux, our data coordinator, for helping us pull some of those data points. Laura Rich, my secretary, who has done an inordinate amount of work in support. And of course, our faculty and staff, the people who are closest to the children, who make all of the magic happen. So I'll begin there. I'm going to take you through the data tonight, and what I ask is that you hold your questions until the end. I'll pause after presenting on the three through eight data to invite any comments from Scott Winn, principal of the middle school. I'll do the same after the regions data, and I'll invite comments from both Scott, we do have some eighth grade regions, and from Andy for the high school regions. All right. So as we begin with the disaggregated data presentation, I'd like to frame our discussion with the Hastings North Star. And this is really the guiding principle of our district as articulated in our Portrait of a Hastings Learner, to nurture a community of diverse learners who foster a just and compassionate society. This means that we take care of each other, we recognize our uniqueness as people and as learners, and we take action in a manner that is right and kind. So that is what we want to model as adults in the system, and that is what we want to help cultivate in our learners. So again, tonight is part two of a sequential series with this presentation being a comprehensive description of disaggregated performance data and evidence. This presentation will also be including some analytical interpretation and some action plans. Our focus is on the state level academic data this evening. And in the future, we'll present a description and analysis of social and emotional data. So please, again, jot down any questions that arise, and I've dedicated some time at the end for questions and discussion. This is our model of continuous improvement, perhaps familiar from the first presentation. And we are committed to examining multiple measures of student data to inform continuous improvement efforts and celebrate growth. And that really needs to be done on an ongoing basis. Here you can see the model of continuous improvement. It includes examining data to determine needs, establishing goals, creating concrete action plans, making the data public for the purposes of feedback, and communicating out and progress monitoring. Systematic use of multiple quantitative and qualitative indicators and outcomes is really a gold standard so that we can understand student progress and student performance. And also, it's very important for us to understand and respect the fact that metrics can't fully capture the complexity of a student's experience, student performance and growth. So one single point of data does not reflect typically the complexity of anything in terms of a simple point. Student cohorts aren't identical, so in some cases, you're not seeing the same groups of students that are represented in data, and that can impact comparability. And that includes who's testing from year to year, right, when you're thinking about those three through eight numbers. And again, tonight's presentation is based largely on the state data. And moving forward, we intend to augment and expand upon the different sources of data that we're triangulating. So here you'll see the sources that have informed tonight's presentation. I won't be presenting on the detailed academic data appendix that you see in number two, but it is included in the slide deck. So if you want to review and dig a little bit more deeply into disaggregated student performance over the past few years, that is there for you. And that is also publicly posted and available in the slide deck. The data that I'll be sharing this evening focuses on the groups that you see here. And these are the groups, this is how the data is disaggregated when we get data at the state level coming to us. Okay, so wherever there are fewer than five students in a demographic group, we've excluded it. And that's standard practice because we want to make sure that anything we're presenting is not potentially personally identifiable. With such a small number of students and understanding student cohorts, you can pretty much pick out who's who. And so we made sure that we did not include anything below five students. And what we found in looking at our data just overall is we do have performance differentials among, in between the subgroups with the most pronounced deltas, most pronounced differences across racial and ethnic groups, and English language status for our multi-language learners. So we also find that these differences tend to diminish. So as students are moving through the district and we're looking at regions' performance, we're looking at proficiency, we start to see those differences diminish, really markedly. And when compared to the state and regionally, our subgroups on average have higher performance. And so we do have the opportunity to be able to look more broadly and to consider Hastings within the context of local districts and across the state. And so we are actually acknowledging that we have much room for growth and improvement, and we also are acknowledging that we are showing higher performance in our district and in many other districts locally when it comes to the subgroup data. So regardless, we will be repeating frequently, we are dedicated to curriculum, to instruction, to social emotional support, to programming that makes sure that we are attending to the growth and achievement of all of our students here in Hastings. So we'll begin with the three through eight New York State testing proficiency data. So this is really encapsulating at the three through eight level what I was just talking about more broadly about the data we're seeing. We are seeing proficiency disparities in grades three through eight primarily for our English language learners, students with IEPs, and Black or African-American students. And then to a lesser extent, we're also seeing some performance disparity for Hispanic students. And again, those gaps are closing by the time the students get to high school. So for next steps, we really need to focus on professional learning to support differentiation and instruction, particularly for more vulnerable subgroups. So when we're thinking about that cultural competence piece, that's very important. We also need to improve our MTSS, and I'm making that as a broad statement district-wide, looking at the arc of our multi-tiered system of supports, and that is tiered intervention. So how are we intervening both in the classroom and outside of the classroom to provide targeted support to students below grade level? And then we do also need to examine the validity and reliability of closing the proficiency gaps as students persist into the high school, meaning, you know, we see this closing, but you know, what is, what else do we need to be considering? Is it how students are being scheduled? Is it their course of studies? You know, when we're thinking about that, what's underneath the closing? And we need to better understand that. So that's a next step for us as well. And then finally, as Dr. McCursie's been talking about, the Assistant Superintendent for PPS, having that opportunity to strengthen programmatic support of special education and ENL. So this slide illustrates more concretely what I noted about how we're seeing those performance disparities, primarily for our English language learners, students with IEPs, Black or African-American students, and to a lesser extent, the Hispanic student group. And it shows that if you look down the left, that's our Hastings data. And percent of level three and four, hitting a level three is considered to be proficient, and four is exceeding proficiency. So you can see in Hastings what that demographic breakdown looks like. And side by side, we put the New York State comparison. So you can see, you know, in terms of the demographic groups, how it looks in Hastings versus how it looks statewide. And then in mathematics, these disparities are evident for both English and English language art and mathematics. And so, you know, what I just said for ELA, we're seeing the same trend in mathematics as well. And then finally here, when we're looking at the science assessment, which I really, and this is grade five. And before I talk a little bit about the analysis here, I want to highlight that this is a brand new assessment. And the other thing that I want to highlight is that while these numbers in terms of proficiency show some opportunities for improvement, when we compare ourselves regionally, we actually did quite well in Hastings in terms of our student performance comparatively. So again, this is the first year for that assessment, and it's aligned to the new P-12 Science Learning Standards, where our teachers have been doing tremendous and exceptional work around performance assessments at the elementary school, and a lot of really strong work in terms of resource and outcome work, both at the elementary school and at the middle school. So you see here substantive variation between the performance of our students with IEPs and all the students in the district. And all students actually include every demographic group that you're seeing below it. And then we're also seeing slight variations for multiracial, Asian Pacific Islander, and Hispanic or Latino students. So I'm going to pause there and offer to Scott, if you, Scott Winn, if you want to add anything on behalf of the middle school portion of the three through eight testing.
Sure, happy to. You know, I think this is a great opportunity for us, right? You know, anytime we're able to dig into the data and begin to disaggregate it and look at our student groups, it gets us down to the real crux of our jobs, to be able to say, are we meeting the needs of all of our students? And by this data, I would say that we see some real positives, and we see some real areas of growth that we need to dig into and to say, what is it that we are doing well, and what is it that we can grow on? I think Melissa has pointed out very, very nicely, you know, we've got areas such as special education, such as ENL students, such as some of our, you know, racial subgroups that we want to really begin to look at from an individual student perspective. Now that we've identified those groups, how do we dig in even deeper to say, okay, why is it that our students are not performing as well in those groups? And I think when we, when we talk about next steps, one of the items that, you know, I brought forward in my action plan when I, when I first started here, that jumped off the page at me from the very beginning is, you know, Hillside has done a tremendous job building their MTSS structure and their support structure. Amy and her staff has truly gone above and beyond to create a phenomenal way to address student needs as they begin. The middle school is really at that beginning phase of doing that work. You know, we were able to add in a math interventionist into the, into the staff last year, which has been a tremendous effort for us and a tremendous addition. And I think moving forward, we will be looking for being able to build a more robust system on the ELA side of things, and then dive into looking at how do we develop those similar structures and build that kind of now, what we will see as a K-8 system of supports for students in order to really address those needs as they begin. So I'm excited about this work. I know some people shy away from challenges like this. That's not me, and I don't think that's the Farragut staff. So I think we've got some, some great things ahead, and we'll be diving in deeply to see what it is that we can do better as we move forward.
So we'll move into the regions proficiency data. And what we're finding is that we're closing the proficiency disparities as students move through the high school. The state test proficiency disparities are decreasing based on the regions as an indicator. And with all students, we're seeing there's still a lot of room for growth and a lot of variations when we're looking at the mastery level. So students that are not just proficient, but students are also at the mastery level. So again, overall, our subgroup proficiency exceeds or meets that of the local region. We did do some comparatives behind the scenes. I have the state data up there for you, but we also have the opportunity to just do lots of digging. So we are seeing that we are trending higher when it comes to certain subgroup proficiency performance on the regions. And we're in discussion with other districts about the status of their disaggregated data. So we do need a more granular data analysis to better understand some patterns and trends and opportunities. And that will include AP participation and performance, looking at that, GPA, SAT. College acceptances. So the beautiful thing about data is there's a lot of it, and making sure that we are putting our eye on things to get a really full picture of our students' experience and all the many and varied ways that students can be successful and how students can show performance and growth. So we'll be focusing our attention on the proficiency and mastery gaps because those are something that you will see visually is fairly pronounced. And, and then as we move forward and the graduation requirements are changing, the regions won't be going away, but the high stakes nature of them will. They will no longer be required for graduation ultimately. And so that will be an important consideration as well. So the next several slides show the proficiency and the mastery data for regions' assessments in a variety of different content areas. And so again, as I just spoke to, you'll see there's greater variation for groups of students at the mastery level, as well as opportunity for growth overall. And this one shows the disaggregated performance data for Algebra I, and this includes both the middle school and the high school. And then here you can see it broken out just for the middle school, showing very strong proficiency for our eighth graders. And again, some room for growth at the mastery level. And here you can see it broken out for high school Algebra I. And again, considerable variation at level five. This is the recent performance in Earth Science. And as we move through the next several slides, we're going to see greater variation for various groups of students, again, at the mastery level compared with both three and four. And here you see it again in English. We do see it in global history. In living environment. So we're seeing a lot of consistency in terms of the performance of different groups compared to all students in the district. And then all students in the district at the mastery level compared to all students at the district at percentage level three and level four. So you're seeing similar trends. And then similarly, again, US history and government. So very little difference. A couple of slight shifts here and there. So I will pause, and before I conclude, I'll invite, well, both Scott Winn and Andy Kleiman, principal of the high school, if there's anything you want to add about the regions.
Thank you, Melissa. I think to just underscore two major points of what the high school was taking away from that data. The first is what a strong job it is currently being done in the elementary and middle school level, right? When our, when our students begin in elementary and middle school, the data disparities are broadly aligned with the same types of disparity that we see statewide. By the time we get to the high school, those disparities for the proficiency level have mostly disappeared, right? Which is a testament to the really good work that's happening.
Oh, Andy, the microphone.
Which is a testament to the really good work that's happening at elementary and middle school, specifically, as Scott mentioned, the type of MTSS systems that are happening at elementary school to really be able to target which students need what supports and provide them with those supports in a timely manner so that the story of where a student's data is in elementary school is not predictive of where they end up by the end of high school. So the first is to just underscore the good work that's happening, especially at the lower grades. By the time students get to us at the high school level, those gaps are beginning to really close. The second piece is that this is not a done deal, right? And that there's still plenty of work to be done. I think the focus on the mastery level is super well-placed. I also think that as we unpack other types of data, specifically AP participation rates, specifically the, when we compare grade point averages with performance on regions, I think that when you look at a single data point, it doesn't tell you a ton. When you combine multiple data points together, you start to see interesting things show up. So I'm excited to roll up our sleeves and see what the data begin to tell us in terms of what some of our next steps are. I'm anticipating some of those questions about participation in the higher level courses and what our grades actually mean in terms of student proficiency. Those, those will be interesting conversations to begin to unpack.
So in conclusion, we have not been surprised by anything that we've been unpacking. We are seeing some pretty persistent trends across content areas and across, you know, the grades and across the years as well. But what we can say is we do have a really strong overall proficiency. And we do have some opportunities for growth, and the key one being some variable performance trends for our different groups of students. So we will continue to attend to that and make sure that MTSS is an important area of attention. So we are not delivering supports for groups of students. We are developing, we are delivering individual supports for individual students and making sure we are meeting kids where they are to move them forward. So, you know, we want to strengthen our program. So we've got the curriculum review cycle efforts that are in play. And that is an inquiry cycle where we go in and we take a look at what we've got. And, and that is based on student data and the needs that we're seeing our students have. And then thinking about our curriculum and our instruction and our assessment practices, and how we can keep moving the needle on our improvement efforts there. And ongoing professional learning is critically important, you know, and that's what helps to move the needle. And professional learning can be collegial. It can be through internal faculty members who bring their expertise and share it, and that gets rippled out. Or it can be with an external thought partner and working collaboratively to make sure that we are aligning and moving forward in a really strong direction that is supported by research and by deep levels of knowing from our experts who are in the classroom on how to move students forward. So I do want to recognize and thank our staff, all levels, because we would not have the proficiency data that we, we have if it isn't for everybody, you know, really rolling up their sleeves and making sure that they are focused on every single learner every day. So there's a strong commitment as well of the three principles, and we are. So there's a strong commitment as well of the three principles, and we are really aligned in terms of valuing data and working together on continuous improvement efforts. So thank you to you. I know Amy can't be here tonight, but we are all on the same page, and we are lockstep on that, and that's wonderful, and that's a real testament to our leadership, our leadership team. So thank you for that. And then the shift to an assistant superintendent of PPS will provide a much more systemic coordination. So when we're thinking of special education, ENL, 504 accommodations, this is all really important, and we anticipate that strengthening the coordination is ultimately going to have a direct impact on our learners. And then finally, we're increasingly committed to expanding on our use of data, including stronger scrutiny and triangulation like Andy just spoke to of multiple sources of data. So, thank you. And I wanted to open up to any questions, comments, reactions.
Jody.
So I'm going to thank you for this, and I'm glad that we finally got the disaggregated data that we could start looking at. And obviously, we could spend a whole meeting on this. There's no question. And it sounds like you have already started thinking of how to attack some of this. I guess one thought I have is, and I could do this at many points of the data, but I'm just going to go right from the beginning. And I I'm looking thinking about the Grade Five Science Assessment. So Melissa and Scott, I'm just thinking, I know that this is the first time this is being done, right? I appreciate, in a mixed way, when we hear that compared to other districts doing well. But it's still hard when you look at the data to see where we are with a lot of the percents, where kids are in Level Three and Level Four. And I guess I just wonder, and obviously, it's great that compared to the state or to other districts, I don't take that away. And every we're not going to have every kid, you know, I get that. But how do we understand the data that we're getting?
Okay. I can, can I? I'll start. So I just wanted to say, first of all, our teachers were really committed to understanding that data. And so we came together, and I also want to thank and recognize Melissa Shandroff as department chairperson, who is intimately involved in all of that. And there's there are reports that we have access to that really help us to understand different types of questions that students were were differently and different types of questions that students were approaching and how they might have answered it. And our teachers not only looked at the trends that we were just talking about in a disaggregated way, they were also looking at, you know, if there was a particular standard and there were some questions within a standard, like multiple questions, how did we do in terms of performance on certain questions versus on other questions? And then really trying to infer, well, why could that have happened? There was analysis even on something called a distractor. So if a student answered C, and that was like a popular answer, you know, why might they have picked that as over B, which would have been the correct answer? And then through that, they can infer potential misunderstandings. So then when they go back to their content, they take a look at that. They also saw certain standards. It's actually, it's a fifth grade test, but it's a test of science over multiple years leading up to fifth grade. So thinking about the content that was showing up there and thinking about, you know, were there any areas in Grades K through four that we might be able to even strengthen further to be able to have that readiness in fifth grade? And again, I, you know, just really being thoughtful about that and dedicated to that. So, Jody, that's really what we're doing. We're and again, I credit our teachers to that, to doing that, because they take this very seriously, and they are so dedicated to their program. And so even though we did really well comparative to the region, to your point, we all acknowledge we have room for growth, and they just quickly rolled up their sleeves, got together, they actually worked as a team, because that's where the power is, and everybody working together and trying to understand. And then backing things up and even considering, is there anything conceptually that needs to be reviewed before they move on to the newer content? Anything I'm, yeah?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that's a great, great kind of synopsis of what took place. And, you know, I think stressing the point of how much of a team effort it was pulling in Melissa Shandroff from from the high school, but also pulling in Robin Farrell
Yeah.
from the elementary school, who is, you know, inherently running that that STEAM program there and doing a lot of that preparation. You know, I think it was very eye opening to our staff, being a new test, of how much of it was third and fourth grade standards that were showing up and the importance of being able to pull all of that together into one kind of cohesive learning opportunity. I think that was that was one of the biggest takeaways for us.
Yep. And the last thing that I'll just add to that, and then we can certainly open it up for more questions and reactions. It wasn't a one and done. And so we got together with, so first it was, we got together, there was Robin, a STEAM teacher in the elementary school, with Melissa Shandroff, and we talked and we made a plan. Then we brought in Shannon Gray, who's coordinator of Fifth Grade. Then we all met, then we had, we sat with the entire grade level, the whole Fifth Grade Team, and then we looked at things. Then I met again with Robin and with Shannon, and we went through unpacking the data, and then they worked with their team, and they unpacked a little further and actually did the distractor analysis and looking at the program. And then finally, there's work that we've been doing over many years, the last few years to get ready for this, with Liz Mira, who's been an external thought partner and has been very well received. People really love working with her. And then that feedback loop will be closed as we get some of that external support as well.
Just just to to piggyback on your question there, and then in that conversation, in that data team conversation, which is so important, do you also have someone from special education and from the English language learners? Because it does seem like that's a group that needs to be looked at in even more depth and maybe teachers having support with. So are they part of that conversation?
We we had the whole Fifth Grade Team there. I don't think we had representation from ENL in that particular meeting. So that's an area that we can strengthen.
I'm a big fan of data, and I'm so grateful for this conversation today. And indeed, the state test is one snapshot in time. So I have like two related questions. Have you been looking and doing this sort of data work longitudinally for like the past five years, looking at that ELA assessment, crosswalking it with all the star the star data you have, which is so rich, maybe looking at some grades, and then doing even like grade level analysis about the different standards that we're meeting and not, and then disaggregating by various subgroups? Like, what is that data work look like at the school level, at the classroom level? And how are you pinpointing on both the needs of students, but also the needs of teachers to be professionally developed around certain areas?
Sure. So I think, you know, when we when we talk about the professional development aspect, that's 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 my, where I really am digging in to be able to say, okay, so we see these issues, we see these areas of growth. How is it that our teachers are performing in terms of their comfort level? But it's also professional development around looking at data.
A hundred percent.
Right? So, you know, I don't, I don't think that's something that has been stressed enough, and it's something that I think we are really beginning to look at as a high need priority for us, to be able to say, how can we provide our teachers with the data? And how can we give them the necessary skills in order to be able to analyze that data to the level that they should be? Now, I was, I'm a math major. I can look at that data and have a better understanding of that, whereas somebody may not. So how can we make sure that everybody has those skills to be able to look at the data and really understand it? And I think being able to cull all that data together can be a little bit overwhelming for people. And it's the be the, really, the skill is to be able to disaggregate it in a way that becomes useful in the classroom. And that's what our ultimate goal is as we're moving forward.
I'm trying just to listen and sort of be the coach off to the side, but this is a very important point. Districts that want to look at this data have to be very, very mature. We have to be supportive of each other, understanding of each other, not playing gotcha. Because once you go down the narrow numeric path, it's a gotcha. I've been in this business since 1981. I've lived through every movement where you tried to get a number to explain, particularly in urban ed, DOE alums and current, give me that number, and the whole system gets something. That's not what we're about, but.
No, and I don't think that's the data movement of this day.
For us in Hastings, from the board level through the superintendent, it's why the only time I'm speaking right now, we have to say, this is about support, getting better, no gotchas, it's about growth for all of us. Because the reticence on data work is, you're going to pin me, so I'm not going to talk about it. As opposed to, we are now way out front in this region sharing this data, because I think this is a mature community to not play gotcha, but play growth.
And I do want to add, and quite earnestly, I want to give a compliment to the growth of our faculty in even wanting data, right? And I think, you know, every single person, when I first came to this district, every single person, it was clear to me was very invested in children and invested in performance and invested in their craft. I also felt concurrently that in Hastings in general, that data was like literally a four letter word in the sense that we are very holistic, very, there's something Hastings about how warm and fuzzy we are and how much we love our students, right? And I I think we've taken a little journey. So when I first came, there was no universal screener. So when we're talking about screening data, there was no screening data. There was no Renaissance star, there was no panorama. I certainly didn't have faculty asking me for access to the data portal, which I started getting requests for access to the data portal so people could see how they were performing in terms of like comparative to their grade level, even in their classroom. And, you know, to the point that was just made, when you have a culture where people are deeply invested in their learners and your whole heart and your whole soul is in the work that you're doing in the classroom, it is vulnerable to be sharing your data if somebody else's performance is better than your performance is in your class. The idea is, we want to break down those walls, we want to create an environment that's really safe to look at all of this, and there is no gotcha. There is, okay, let's get curious about this, because this is really interesting. So how do we help everybody move forward? And can we say that it was like the makeup of the class, or can we say it was the instruction? Or maybe there was different content that was being taught? It could be the coherence of the program. And so all of these things come into play as we're creating a safe culture around working with data. And I have personally seen a lot of growth in terms of readiness in our system and valuing it. So that's great. So that's my sincere compliment out to anyone who's listening.
I I hear what you're saying, and I just want to also just push back a little in that I think that, right, I think the first step is creating a professional learning community around everyone, right? From the board asking for data and questioning data, to leaders talking about data, to teachers talking about data, so that we all can take risks and learn together. And I think that's the goal for all of us. But in part of that is data transparency. So I think this has been a wonderful talk tonight where we get to see some of this so we can ask those questions and all as a community ask those questions, because I think some of us in the community know where to go in IED to find the data, but some of us don't. And I think that's confusing. And I think ultimately, we all want every child in our district to survive and thrive and do well. And I've worked with so many districts who've had transformational experiences where everyone becomes learners, working with data, working as teams, and it doesn't have to be competitive. And I just, I just push against that framing of it, because I've seen it be so collaborative and so meaningful for everyone involved, and I hope that that's the approach that we can all take.
Yeah. I would just like to say that, you know, one of the headlines for me, well, the two headlines really are the high proficiency this district has already and also the ability of the district to move children from where they start to where they end up. Because, you know, apart from everything else, that that, you know, you're teaching kids, I feel like, in my experience, students, kids are very, become very binary about their situation. This is a subject for me, or it's not for me. I get it, I don't get it, I'm going to do well, I'm not going to do well. And what this shows to me is that the MTSS, that that support, teacher level, whether it's informal or formal, it's helping kids understand that it's not just a binary, that they can move along that that way. And so I have a lot of faith in the things, and we only touched on it very lightly, but the MTSS, whether it's ELA or math, or if we're going to at some point get into a sciency sort of support, I think that's exactly the right spot to push in. I know a lot of kids, you know, in a formal sense, they get sort of invited or classified for additional support, but even in a granular way, I've seen kids who are good in a certain subject or at a certain time fall behind for a variety of reasons. And once they get behind, they stay behind, it goes sideways. So all to say, I think we're on the right path, and I think anything we can do to strengthen those supports, those guardrails, is going to, you know, enrich what we've already got going on. And I would also say that, you know, about data and numbers, New York State is moving away from just a Regents based assessment. And, you know, that's not something that's novel. In some ways, New York State's kind of late. I want to say there are only maybe nine states in the United States that still have those those exit exams. And so what New York State is trying to do is have kids, that same binary way, have them understand that success is not just about a number. You don't have to say, I'm going to be a successful kid, or I'm not. You don't have to make that distinction. Success can be really a broad thing. And so I think that's also, that's where New York State's going, and I think that's the kernels of that is where we're going, the statement you read at the beginning about it being diverse learners. I feel like that's what we're already supporting. We're not reducing it to a number. We're not trying to. So I'm, I'll just say, I'm, you know, it's real data, and there's, there's things that have to improve, but I'm heartened by the vibe of it, really. So thank you. Thank you both. Appreciate it. Any other questions?
I just have a quick question. Go. It's really quick. So in the tables, I noticed in addition to the discrepancy between different subgroups, on some of the tables, they had categories for the discrepancy between high income students and low income students, but those weren't categories that were available across all the different tables. Why is that?
Because we had less than five. And so when there was less than five, I didn't include it. So where there was more than five, I did include it, and I can, I included the the counterbalance, the low income, not low income. So on a particular grade or a particular assessment, for example, we may have had three students that were considered low income, and so they were excluded.
Okay. Thank you.
Dave?
Yeah. I appreciate the in-depth data analysis that we're going through and moving from a warm and fuzzy place and going to a place where we're analyzing the data. Some of this data I was looking at, and I was thinking about students that fall into multiple subgroups. So it's an equity versus quality issue. And how are we looking at this data in terms of disproportionality when it comes to intersectionality? For example, black female students with IEPs, or you can take it one step further, Hispanic Ls, right? So I don't see that data represented here. Does the school have a process where they look at intersectionality when it comes to the data?
It's a great question. So it's harder for us to get that data unless we're digging into an individual child. It's not easy for us to grab that from somewhere. So a lot of what we did here is also manual, because we did it over multiple years. But it's something that we need to give greater food for thought. So I actually really appreciate that. We haven't done a lot with the intersectionality piece. We're looking at students who may appear in multiple different places.
I don't know if Andy or Scott want to add to that at all.
So I would agree. I think we did need to do a much deeper level of analysis when it comes to that. I found that we're not doing it as much on the building level, but our teachers know a lot of that information, having been with those students at the classroom level. And I think they're going to be the real core kind of purveyors of that information for us to start as we move forward. But I would agree that we need to systematize that in a better way in order for us to really understand those subgroups in that kind of intersected way.
Thank you.
Gloria? My question is actually on the aggregated data. On, it seems like across the board, the state, we've jumped up from 2022 into 23, 24. Is that sort of the remnants of COVID or any other explanation why it would be pretty much across the board a jump from all the grade levels in all the subjects?
Are you looking at, can you give me a slide number so I can get a sense?
Thirty-two.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I know what you're talking about here. So it's, it's a great question. It's hard to pinpoint causality, frankly. And so if you look diagonally, you're tracking a cohort over time, right? So if you look at spring 2022, G three, grade three, so you're looking at 90% proficiency, then you're looking at 94% proficiency, that same group. And then the following spring, 2024, 83% proficiency. So if you're looking at cohort data, you're not necessarily seeing that upward trend. If you're looking across, we were seeing some upward If you're looking across, we, we're seeing some upward trends in certain places. And, you know, other places where, where it's frankly like six and seven. If you look across horizontally, you're seeing pretty much stability, right? And so when we're looking at that, it's really that we're asking more questions than having more answers, frankly. So we're thinking about who is in the cohort, did the cohort change? What is the program looking like? Is the program changing? If you're looking at G5, grade five, and you're looking across ELA assessment, you know, the, the proficiency data for 2022 is quite different than 2024. So that raises a question about what shifted perhaps with program, right? In terms of what we've been working on. So I think one thing that I can extrapolate is over a couple of years, it's really hard to, to identify a solid trend. We have to keep following it. Your point's well taken. I think COVID, you know, when we hit the 2019, 2020, and then we had a year where there was no testing even. So we're, we're still asking questions about that. But what we're hoping to see is as we're doing work in certain areas, whatever you focus on tends to grow. I've seen this, you know, even in my former stops, right? Whatever you're focusing on tends to grow. Right now, we're focusing on writing at the middle school, so we expect that that will grow. We had a lot of work at ELA at the elementary school over a lot of years. And we, regionally, I have colleagues at the table who lean over and ask me, what did you do in Hastings at the elementary level, right? Because it's working, right? So I don't have a clear answer for you yet. And I, I know you'd like one, and I just don't have it yet. I think we're just, we still have more questions based on what we're seeing. And our goal is to just make sure we're meeting students where they are and making sure we're continuing to provide interventions that move, move them forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
I have one more question about the mastery. I guess it's slides 16 and 17.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was about, it was about the mastery on slides 16 and 17. So it was about, you know, certain groups not rece, not reaching at the same potential as their, their peers, right? What are the barriers for students, like black students at eight percent, Hispanic at 31, right? So what are the barriers for those students reaching mastery? And what are we putting in place to have them achieve mastery?
So one of the things that I neglected to share, which I think is incredibly important, is that for us in Hastings, when we're looking at our demographic subgroup data, we're looking at very small numbers. So you may be looking at, when we're thinking about all students, and the all students number, and you'll see it in different slides. When you see a number, that's actually the, not on this slide, but there's, there's a, there's a student number, basically, like how many students from the sample. I included the mean number, you know, but even for all students, we're talking about over 120 students, for example, where the question that was asked earlier about why aren't we seeing low income on some and we are seeing on others, sometimes we're seeing like three students or two students. We purposely put multiple years together so that we could report out on subgroup data. We were being very thoughtful to make sure that we weren't necess, we want to be transparent. We also want to protect personally identifiable information. So one of the things that has to do with what you're seeing here is it's, it's, it's hard because we want to make sure that we are not disregarding the disparities, okay? At the same time, when you're comparing 120 students with perhaps six students, you'd see a much wider variation in terms of, of any kind of performance, you know, based on that smaller sample size. But again, it really has to do with our MTSS processes and making sure that we are meeting kids where they are. And so I would argue that that's the lens. Like when we're thinking about a barrier, making sure that we can strengthen our approach to make sure that we're attending to the individual needs of our students.
I say, when it comes to the percentage, aren't you using like a disproportionality index to show the disparity, right?
We're not, we're using, we're using actual data from the state. So X number of students, how did they score? And then what percentage scored at a level five, what percentage scored at a level three, four, five? So it's broken down for us based on our sample size. And then what we did here is we, we aggregated it and found the mean. So over the year for 2022, 2023, 2024, so black or African-American students in terms of their performance over those years, and then taking that mean, that's what you're seeing over those three years because we wanted to make sure that we included the data.
You can equitize the number, right? Like, I'm looking at you, Catherine, sorry, I'm looking at you, Catherine. You can equitize the number based on disproportionality to show how that falls regardless of how the sample size is, right? So that's not happening here, is that, that's what I'm asking, okay?
No. So these numbers kind of are skewed because they reflect that we have such a small number of students that fall. Like according to our demographics, at least what I'm familiar with from last year, the, the demographic profile is that we have 2% of our students in district being classified as black or African-American, and roughly 14.7% being classified as Hispanic or Latino.
That's right.
Right? So that throws off a lot of these numbers, given the fact that you're actually talking about a relatively small number of students. And then when you talk about the intersectionality piece, it, that there.
They can appear more than.
I'm just trying to, you know, get a, not that we're going to grasp this right now, but like how many numbers, how many students are we actually talking about in an overall district size of 1,650? Like, you know, like, I mean, so that we can target those students and help those students with, you know, whatever support and mechanisms we need.
The larger takeaway here is we have performance gaps we have to pay attention to. And we can try and slice it, dice it. I think we're brand new to some of this work, let's be clear. So we can get more technical, but we have very small ends. And we have to protect the privacy. Having said that, we've put now on the screen very openly, we've got discrepancy. And we're not playing gotcha, we're playing growth on that. And my point is I've led other districts where they put the numbers up later, they went down the gotcha path. And we're not going to do that here because the minute we do that, people don't want to engage. So, and I think the question Dave you had and Scott's answer gets to, this is macro data, the real micro classroom level data. And if teachers are listening, we know that every minute the best teacher is using some kind of feedback mechanism to figure out growth and progress, which I think gains what you are speaking to, right? That doesn't show up in the macro data sets. So we're going to keep working on this, keep digging on it. That's why you saw that chart that had five or six bubbles across a year. So we'll stay in this conversation for a while. So I mean, we may want to just keep moving at this point, if I might suggest that. Take all this good information and, and come back to you with more analysis, more insights. Is that?
Yeah. Can I just add one?
No, of course.
I appreciate the, the question because I think it, it gets at a real important aspect of the data that we need to dive into. I mean additionally, like I'm looking at this algebra data and we're talking about N size. And one of my big question is, is the N size, because algebra is a class that is a class where we kind of diverge into Math 8 and into Algebra. Is our N size in each of these categories reflective of the N size of, you know, proportionally within the grade level? Like that's an important question that I've begun to ask.
Right.
And I think it ties in with, you know, not just the performance, but also is the, the population within the class also reflective of our population?
I mean, I think that's great. And if you look at the next slide, like you'll see in the middle school, there are no kids, the IEP number doesn't show up there, right?
Correct.
And then in the high school, it does. Like I think that's to your point of like where are students, how, who has access, who doesn't? I mean, they're really important questions.
Yes.
Yeah.
Scott, thank you. Any other questions, comments? No? A big thank you to principals, Winn and Clayman, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And Dr. Shizmansky as well, putting it all together. So we're going to be moving on, thank you, good night. We're going to be moving on to the BCS finding and bond planning. And if I can frame this a little bit, thanks guys. The bond sort of has three legs. One of them can be considered our facilities, the other can be considered the fields. And partly the third leg we haven't talked about yet is the, essentially the maintenance envelope of the existing facilities. And that comes from something called the BCS, which is a building condition survey, which is required by New York State for us to provide every five years, is that right?
Yes.
Every five years. Yeah. And so tonight, we have Matt Milne-Mao and Danielle Farrell from Land Group, who are going to take us through the BCS that they performed for us and sort of the consequences from that, how it, how it bleeds into the bond. So welcome, welcome Danielle, welcome Matt. Is that a fair summation of where we're starting tonight?
Yeah, you took some of my, some of my slides.
Okay, sorry.
That's, that's fine. Well, thank you for having us. We were here two weeks ago, like he said, to talk about another component of the project. But now we're here to talk about the building condition survey. I'm Danielle Farrell, I'm a licensed architect and assistant vice president at Land, and I'm with Matt Milne-Mao, who is a vice president and principal in charge of our New York office. So I am going to go through, kind of explain what a BCS is, and then we'll get into what the, what our findings were. So we have a lot to get through, so I'll start here. And so you explained that very well. A BCS is required by the New York State Education Department every five years. So it used to be every five years on the, the year 2000, 2005. In 2020, they changed that and they made it so it's a staggered system. So the district had a, thank you. The district had a BCS that was performed, that was required by the state in 2015. And then they also did one in, I believe it was 2019 or 2020. And so we kind of went through and looked at all of the different things that needed to be done in the district. So we have our preliminary preparation, then we collected data, we had an analysis of data and the preparation of the report. And from that information, we also create what's called a five-year plan, which becomes kind of our roadmap of what you need to do over the next five years. And also, not every district can do everything in a five-year chunk. And some of that becomes more of a long-range facilities plan. So this is an example of what the building condition survey is that the, that the state asks for. It is a level, it is a system of checkboxes where we have to say whether things are anywhere between excellent and critical failure. The problem with this is that they generalize everything. So we might be able to say that the ceilings in one wing are in great condition, but there might be another wing of the school where there has a lot of ceilings that have wet ceiling tiles because of different roof leaks in the past. So it doesn't really give us a good planning tool. So what Land likes to do is we like to dive a little bit deeper and we actually do written reports for the building condition survey. So this is an example of a written report that Land does. And like I said, we, we do more than just check the boxes. We like to get really detailed in the information because we know that a lot of the board members, a lot of the community members can't go up on the roof and see what the condition of the masonry is. And they can't see, you know, some of these items that we can see. So we like to take a lot of photos and give the district a nice big report. But really, it's for us as well. We're new to the district. It was a great way for us to get to know all of your buildings. And that becomes pretty much our bible of, of our next five years and our long range. So this is a little more detail about our process. So our preliminary preparation is that we came to the district with two architects and up to three engineers, and we looked at every part of your buildings. We looked at the roofs, we looked at the masonry, we went inside the building, we did the fields. And we also reviewed previous reports that you've done to kind of know what was done and what wasn't done over the past, you know, five, 10 years. So we worked with the director of facilities and we met with head custodians at each of the schools because they have the institutional knowledge of what has been done in those buildings. They know where a roof leak is, they know systems that they're having issues with. So we really relied on them a lot. Plus then we also took our, you know, fresh, fresh set of eyes and looked at all of that. So to take advantage of the district not having any students over the summer, we did all of our reviews in August. And then we kind of went back and collected the data and then we, next slide. Then we went back and we analyzed all the data. We started to write our reports and we started to put together our five-year plan report. And from there, that's where we get to start to pick and choose projects that you're going to try to do over the next five years. So we have this document that's a sortable document. And as we move things from year one to year three, depending on when the district wants to, to undertake that, those projects, it will also change the escalation because we know that something that costs, you know, $10 today is not going to cost $10 in five, 10 years. So this is just to give you, after that, that's fine. Our next step is that we are going to have our written reports. And now it's a conversation of what exactly we found and how we want to prioritize that and how we want to achieve all of those projects. So over the three, four, five site visits we made, we walked almost 300,000 square feet worth of building. And we really, you know, dived into each of the buildings and the systems, which then was able, we were able to put together the building reports. And next one?
Can I pause just, just a little bit of background, I think might be useful before we get into the national reports. I just want to say, you know, it was a one line in there that, about the people that came to do the BCS were architects and engineers. And one of the, you know, when we were doing the hiring process, one of the questions came up, well, you know, we feel in, in some times that with that, for the BCS, because it's a checkbox thing, that firms come with interns and sort of breeze through the building. And one of the things that would press, impressed us about Land was the seriousness, you know, the, the horsepower, firepower that you guys brought to the BCS. And I just want to underline that for, for everybody, for the community, that that's, that's something, you know, this data, not only, as you mentioned, you don't just do checkboxes, but it's because you have the expertise that you brought here that it allows you to have this deeper look into it. I also want to say, as a sort of historical thing, the BCS didn't, didn't always exist, right? New York State used to fund projects and what would happen is that districts, instead of doing maintenance, they would build new stuff. And the BCS came into existence because it was trying to enforce a certain standard of, of districts taking care of their buildings. So I just thought that was useful, I hope so.
Thank you, Alex. We always call the BCS to serve like your annual physical when you go to the doctor. They can tell you a little bit about what you need and they can analyze your health and they ask for more tests and then you follow up and you meet the specialists which come later. So we are a full-service firm with architects and engineers in a partnership of a company providing design services to school districts. And so what you'll see from us is where we are a little bit different is we're principal-led, we're in the field, we're on the ground, we're looking at your facilities. Because when I come out and do a presentation like this, and when I report our observations, I want to be able to tell you, that's the picture I took or I looked at that and you know that I saw it and you can ask me a question about it. So it's really important for us to see it firsthand from a leadership perspective. My whole team will take a direction with Danielle and I about what we recommend to the school district, how we recommend correcting it and the approach by which we apply our, our, our plan to go forward. So at Hillside Elementary, these were some of the findings, and this is sort of an executive summary. I'm not going to read every little nook and cranny of it. But effectively what we found is the school district reported some parking issues and we experienced those parking issues quite honestly. The parking spaces are quite tight. And as you show up around school hours, you can see that there is a pressing need for additional parking. School district also reports to us that it would be nice to have a bus lane. And, and of course, from a safety vehicular standard standpoint, we agree, it would be nice to separate vehicular transportation from school transportation. That's always a good safety measure. So those are two studies that the school district reports issues to us. It's not something we always necessarily see. It's not always a physical condition we can observe. As Danielle suggested, that we were there during the summertime. So we didn't see full bus traffic until we went back to Hillside later on. But from a standpoint of this is something we need to take a look at. We are aware of some stormwater drainage issues. I'll show you a subsequent slide where we'll take a look at the site. There's the potential to analyze some of your stormwater structures to make sure that they're working properly and functional, and we can get into that a little bit more later. But from the perspective of Hillside, it looks like you've done a major capital project. Of course, you, you're all aware of the addition that you've done, completed around 2019. And there was a lot of time and attention put into the care of Hillside and bringing it up and modernizing it. The building envelope is in fairly good shape. There's a couple of areas that require some window replacement. Building interior, I think, is where you could focus some of your time and attention and energy. We would recommend modernizing the classrooms, flooring, ceiling, lighting and casework replacement. There's a couple of wings in the school district, sorry, in the Hillside Elementary School that are more pressing in need. I think the third grade wing looks a little bit more outdated than the rest of the wings. We know the school district has invested good money in upgrading the lighting fixtures, but when you do a ceiling replacement project, unfortunately, that comes with the potential of doing a lighting replacement project. So although the lights are performing well, they're modern, they're LED, they're controlled, there's always room for improvement. And if you're going to modernize the instructional environment, I think you, And if you're going to modernize the instructional environment, I think you take a holistic view. So we would suggest that you take a closer look at prioritizing that. On the mechanical or the engineering side, replacement of obsolete mechanical equipment or end-of-life mechanical equipment. There is some code deficiencies based on the modern code interpretation or the current code that you would need to address, providing mechanical ventilation in your corridors, for example. Critically obsolete or equipment that's reaching the end of its serviceable life, pneumatic controls. You also have lead-positive domestic supply water piping that should be replaced, and the replacement of boilers and flue piping. Boilers are nearing the end of their serviceable life, they're about 30 to 35 years old, ASH Ray standards, which is the American Society for Heating, Refrigerating, Air Conditioning, and another part of that acronym that I can't remember. But I would say, though, they recommend a service life of 30 to 35 years. And so this piece of equipment, the boiler, which is the heart and soul of the school, is reaching the end of its serviceable life. It is a section boiler with cast iron parts. School district doesn't report any significant issues. It seems to be well taken care of, it's in good shape. So although it is reaching the end of its serviceable life, we typically see boilers like this in our industry and other schools last up to 50 years. The last thing you want to do is wait till a boiler fails and have to replace it. So it's always good to have a proactive strategy. That being said, that's about the financial investment and the way that you plan your future capital projects. I think if you knew you were going to do something in five years, you wouldn't necessarily need to do it. If you didn't think you were going to do another capital project for 10 to 15 years because you put your time and energy into this, then we would recommend including replacing the boilers because it could be a long time and it could reach the end of its serviceable life, and nobody wants to know what happens when your boiler goes down. So, long story short, in the executive summary, it seems like Hillside is in very good shape. From what we can tell, everything has been maintained. Maintenance staff, custodial staff, director of facilities does a fantastic job. It seems like they're in there all summer long, working really hard on the facilities, doing as much as they can, putting a lot of sweat into those buildings to keep them looking good. So Sugar Pond, at the top of the hill, water runs downhill, right? It's gravity. And so you have a lot of storm drainage structures at the top of this hill that flow down that hill towards the tennis courts and all the way down in this direction. And it's my understanding the school district has experienced some stormwater challenges. We would take a look at the stormwater structures, make sure they're all clear, free, operational, functional. We could also take a look at some of the impact, the collateral impact of an off-campus amenity, if you will, or asset, the Sugar Pond, which is not on the school district property, but may perhaps contribute to some of the stormwater issues you're experiencing or that the municipality suggests that you're experiencing on the site. And then, again, on the parking, as you approach from Lefarge Yav, there certainly is a need for additional parking that may require us building into the softball field, perhaps putting a retaining wall up, adding parking and creating a slip lane for a bus. That's something we would have to look into, it's just some casual ideas we could throw out now. And these are examples of what we saw at Hillside, just so that the layperson, the public, the community understands what we see through our lens. There are some windows in need of replacement. On the bottom right and in the bottom center are pictures from your classrooms in the third grade wing. So you have some very outdated ceilings with some newer lighting fixtures, some very outdated casework, and VCT flooring from probably 25-plus years ago. On the bottom left is an example of a door replacement project, or door replacement. Now, I'm not going to pretend to know what every one of these pictures is, and I don't think it's fair for us to all say, hey, those are valves in the middle on the bottom, there's some controls on the top right. What we're seeing is pictures that we saw and that we observed out in the field from our mechanical engineer's viewpoint. And these are some of the recommendations they've made, which are no different than what I told you before in the executive summary. These are all critical engineering and challenges, building system challenges that you have to keep up, maintain, and these are things that are on the horizon that you should consider prioritizing. So to flip over to the tale of two cities, if you will, Hillside's in great shape, Farragut's in great shape, don't get me wrong, but this building is getting old. It's nearly, it's over 100 years old in some cases. And any building that's over 50 years old is going to require increased amounts of maintenance. And so you have routine annual maintenance that you have to do to just preserve the envelope of a building of this size, shape, and scale. It is a masonry building, so masonry does require routine preventative maintenance so that issues that you see now, such as a crack or mortar loss, don't become more pervasive issues like water infiltration. You have some loss of playing use, which when Danielle and I were here last with the LA group, we reported a loss of playing use and a loss of hours on your athletic fields due to the weather concerns and weather issues. So we want to take a closer look at that and see what kind of improvements we could suggest there. Building envelope, you have to budget for preventive maintenance and routine annual maintenance. And then the more important sort of meat and potatoes of the whole presentation, I think, is really centered around the dysfunctional amount of space or lack of space in your instructional environment. So that third paragraph is really crucial. I'm going to read it because it is very well thought out and very well planned. "The interior of the building, the space use allocation, organization, and relationships are dysfunctional throughout the entire building. Classrooms are undersized. The cafeteria is overcrowded. There is a limited variety of instructional learning environments." I could go on, but we're going to give you some examples, I'm not going to read every single bit of this. With this, on the same note as Hillside, modernizing and keeping up and maintaining your mechanical systems are important. You have mechanical systems that are reaching the end of their serviceable life, we call that critical obsolescence. And there are definitely some code adoptions that have happened in the last 20 years where you were allowed to design a building that didn't have mechanical ventilation in corridors when it was originally designed, but the building code since 2010 has said you now need to provide mechanical ventilation in corridors. So whereas that is okay to operate a building, it's safe, it's okay, what I would say is, in order to address that code deficiency, you should consider prioritizing a mechanical ventilation upgrade in the school. So these are some of the highlights. From the site standpoint, an athletic facility and field improvements are recommended. Building envelope, facade preservation and masonry restoration. Let's just say if the entire building facade is 100%, we would recommend putting 25 to 30% of a budget for the whole building to plan on restoring and preserving at least 25 to 30% of the building envelope. On the building interior, you have several wings that are in need of modernization, flooring, ceiling, lighting, casework replacement. Very good examples in the photos later. Again, mechanical systems, critical obsolescence, mechanical ventilation, DDC controls. And then from the electrical system standpoint, I think you can see there are strip outlets here, and that is sort of an adaptation for modern use that provide technology to all your students, provide power to all your students. In every one of these classrooms, you see wire molds, you see surface-mounted raceway. It's really hard to do an electrical infrastructure improvement project, bury it in the walls and make it go away. Not a lot of people will remember that kind of investment because you just don't see it. Once that paint goes up, everybody forgets about what's behind the walls. But what's behind the walls in this case is old electrical infrastructure. There is a need to modernize the instructional environment to provide access for your students to plug in, to connect, and that is, that is what we see pretty much throughout the entire school. From a space adequacy standpoint, I think you've probably heard PBDW, who will become one of our partners in this potential project. They've done an extensive amount of research, they're really great at their craft. They've made recommendations to enlarge or create a new cafeteria. The existing cafeteria, the bottlenecks to get in are very crowded, the cafeteria is undersized, and there's a number of suggestions that they've made to improve that condition. And then, of course, universal accessibility into and out of the building. We all came in up a set of stairs, we walked down a corridor, and we came down a set of stairs, that is, if you could make that whole transportation route. But more importantly, the building needs to be universally accessible. This is a public asset for the entire community, and one of the biggest deficiencies you have is providing a universally accessible entrance and circulation path through the building. So those are some of the highlights of the improvements. What I would say is that the athletic facility that we presented two weeks ago, there's a variety of options, scales of options, there's synthetic, there's natural. But the bottom line is that if the athletic director and your school is reporting a loss of use due to weather conditions, there's a variety of options to solve that problem. We can give you options, but you have to tell us which option you prefer. There are all sorts of scales. For example, the option on the right is more expensive than the option on the left, and depending on which option you prefer, we can do natural, we can do synthetic, we can provide an athletic facility of all sorts of scales. So I think we've provided some options at the last meeting that are all very good, and we'd be happy to take your feedback on those. Here are some of the things that we discovered from a building envelope standpoint, facade preservation and masonry restoration. So the photo in the center is a stone water table. You can see in the top left of that oval, there's an open mortar joint. As we walk the perimeter of the building, we look at, we look for things like this. This is where water can eventually get in. On the top right, you see the fourth floor of the original building, which is looking outside of the auditorium. In the left corner, where that beige or yellowish cornice band, you see that little white sort of streaking down below, that's what's called efflorescence. Those are salts bleeding out of the building, coming from water infiltrating through the masonry and forcing the salts out of the building. In that particular condition, on the top left of that building, there's a Yankee gutter, and there's a coping that comes down, and the coping appears to have delaminated, and it seems like you're getting water coming into the building from that spot. I would also note that at the fourth floor of this, a lot of wind-driven rain probably hits this facade, and I think it soaks in and eventually weeps out. So I think in particular, this one location seems to be of noticeable need. On the bottom left, and just across the whole bottom, we took snapshots of some of the various limestone elements. So you see in the bottom left corner, there's a door, and you have a vertical pilaster on the left side of the door that's stained black. On the right side in the photo of the Farragut wing, at the cornice line and some of the brick, you can see it's staining. A lot of the limestone on this building has stained over the years. And look, it is probably more of an aesthetic issue in terms of cleaning it and upkeeping it. It's sometimes indicative of a more pervasive issue of water infiltration, but I think just in terms of keeping up and making the building look nice, aesthetically, I would put some time and attention into keeping it clean, maintaining it, and preserving it. On the interior of the building, top right, you can see VCT flooring that has started to chip. Some of that flooring is cupping. It seems like the subfloor, the floor that's beneath the finish floor, in some cases feels a little weak, it may be moving a little bit, it's getting old, it's got, it's under duress. It's time to replace not just the finish, but you're probably going to need to replace the subfloor. From a ceiling and lighting standpoint, you can see on the bottom left, we have some ceiling tiles. These are prior to the anti-sag ceiling tiles that we use currently. So there's quite a few ceiling tiles in the school district, perhaps some in this room that are starting to sag. We see that, that can perhaps fall out of the ceiling grid at times over time. It's just the weight of gravity eventually pulling that ceiling tile down. It's not chicken little, I'm not telling you to look up, there's no danger. If we saw something, we would ask Joe, if he's here, and we'd let him know about it. VCT flooring in the center photo, you've had areas with high use, high traffic, they inevitably had to be repaired, so that's an example of stitching in perhaps something there. Bottom right is an example of a photo, I believe in the Farragut wing on the second floor. What you have above that ceiling are original, really beautiful stamped tin ceilings, beautiful cornices that die into it. You have a drop ceiling with suspended, sorry, with suspended lights, ceiling suspended lights. In this case, this is an example of a classroom that requires modernization. The casework, the ceilings, the lights, the instructional environment is just not as exciting to the students and perhaps doesn't represent the more contemporary culture they're accustomed to.
Sure. Will you call on me?
Please do.
So while we're on these images, Maureen, I'm going to mention a big discovery you all this summer. It underscores what Alex, his board president, said. We got to LA and through a competitive RFP process. You competed with a lot of great firms. That rigor you brought was essentialist in the Farragut complex. You came in and looked at two classroom ceilings where there was a sag, and we have a great team here that's keeping this 100-year-old building, working well, running well, very clean. People have been here over the last nine, 10 years, see a big difference. Having said that, you identify that sag's a quite serious concern. Above that, there was concrete holding in place, but such that we, you caught something. It could have been a real, real problem. We, our team then got in, fixed it, identified it, cleaned it up, where we avoided quite a serious issue for us here as a community. So that was the great rigor you brought to it, but it also underscores, we have been shy on doing this kind of work for too long in Hastings. So I'll let you continue.
I appreciate that footnote. Into the MEP or building systems, you have building equipment on the roof, you have pneumatic controls, you have valves, you have electrical, circuiting and distribution that's outdated. I mean, it's really just a modernization, you know, sort of upgrade of your MEP systems. They're in need. Where you draw the line on an older building, you know, sort of becomes the discretionary sort of task of the Board of Ed and the community to respond to. So PBDW, got to give credit to them. This is all their imagery, they've made some really great suggestions. I think probably if you've been following along with the Board of Ed and some of their presentations, you might have seen some of this work. What they've proposed on the bottom left is a vestibule entrance in front of the Farragut original school entrance that would improve the ADA accessibility of the school. We feel as architects, as design professionals, universal accessibility is probably the most important design challenge we have in the public sector. On the bottom right is a proposed cafeteria addition, it would be out here in the courtyard. Another great solution, we're fully on board with that. LAN has not worked with PBDW before, we were asked to come in and evaluate their suggestions. We've been working with Rena, and we think they have some really great ideas. We're fully supportive of their recommendations. So up on the top right, you see some, just some colored diagrams of where those improvements might occur. These would address the overcrowding in the cafeteria, would create some new technical instructional spaces, renovate portions of the Washington wing, would address the cafeteria issue, provides ADA compliance. So as Danielle said, the BCS and the five-year plan process is a tool, it's a live document, it's dynamic. The information that we've given you today will likely change because you're going to give the Board of Ed and you're going to come out into these meetings and say, hey, I think we want to do this, or have you looked at this? Just like when we interact with the school district's leadership, they say, hey, no, I'd like to prioritize this, or I don't think that's as big a deal, or Joe, the director of facilities, can take care of that with our own capital budget. So this is what the document looks like. On the top right are the categories of years one through gray, which is deferred. We have to acknowledge that the things that we find as design professionals are probably going to outstrip your financial means to take care of in one foul swoop. I have an old home, I have old windows, they work fine. I would love to replace them, I can't afford to do it. And if my wife tells me I got to do a kitchen renovation, that's where I put my money into. So both of these are the live documents we have for Hillside, here's a live document we have for Farragut. I understand it's way too small for anybody to see. There are going to be some enlarged slides next. But what I would say is, this is the list of work that develops into the categories of years. This is how we use a planning document and steer a school district into a capital project or into their budgeting, planning process. So what we've done is, we've taken the recommendations and priorities at Hillside and Farragut, and we've put them into these different year categories. So year one, knowing that year one's upcoming and that the school district has not put a referendum out, and their budget is what it is, and it'll be voted on next May, there's only so much money that we can expect the school district to outlay following year one, which is '24, '25. Year two and year three, if we were to move forward with a capital project, a bond referendum, and that bond referendum went up for vote during the budget, it would still be a year later after we've designed it, after it's permitted by the New York State Education Department, after it's competitively bid, before we start that work. So the phase one and two of a bond referendum, which occur in years '25, '26, and '26, '27, have the majority of our recommended capital improvements shown in terms of the cost in those years. Years four and five, no scheduled work for two years following the bond referendum. We've exhausted our bank account, we've exhausted the community and the public support of that bank account. We've said this is what we need to do, and we've put all our effort into doing that. Year, sorry, the deferred work are things that we just won't be able to get to, not in five years. So it's irresponsible to say, hey, we didn't get to it in years one through three, we did a bond referendum, but we're going to do it in year four and five, knowing full well, we're never going to be able to fund it in year four or five. So there's just some things that don't make the cut, and they won't make the list. So what are the five-year plan next steps? The collective gasp we usually get when that blue number goes up is that we've recommended 85, or we've discovered $85.6 million of capital improvement projects in today's money. When you escalate that at 6% per year over the next five years, that number goes up. We found that you've done a bond referendum in 2018, you made significant improvements to Hillside Elementary School. PBDW has identified space deficiencies at Farragut. The school district has experienced loss of playing hours on their athletic facility, and we need to discuss how to prioritize these improvement projects. So we take that five-year plan and we give our professional opinion. It's our professional opinion based upon doing this with other school districts, it's based on our priorities, our prioritization of work, our recommended focus, and these are the areas of focus that we would recommend the school district consider. Building additions, an entrance addition to the Farragut school here, cafeteria addition, and what I call collateral renovations. So if you were to build a cafeteria addition over here, and then you no longer use that cafeteria over there, something needs to happen over there, there needs to be renovations to convert that unused space. There needs to be renovations to convert that unused space back into something. Miscellaneous capital projects, facade preservation, interior renovations, MEP improvements. These are what we probably found in the BCS and through the BCS process. Athletic facility and field improvements. These are based on the discussions we've had with the athletic director, with district leadership, based on our expertise in the industry and what other school districts in the area may be doing. And areas of focus at Hillside Elementary School, MEP improvements, they're basically the findings in the building condition survey that are of the highest priority. So we provided a preliminary budget recommendation. I'll admit, I can't read it at this size, but we have a better picture of it if people want to take a look at a hard copy of one.
There's also in the end, at the back of the board's packet, there are, is a, a blah blah.
So these are the different categories of work that we talked about and recommendations. I think the next slide, this is, I'm going to go back after this. So at the Farragut complex, additions and renovations, athletic field improvements and capital improvements from the BCS, our strategy for planning a referendum here at this school district is to focus on those three different categories, and that's what this budget recommendation suggests. So, starting from the top, Farragut Middle School, High School, entrance addition, cafeteria addition, miscellaneous capital improvement projects. There is a sum down here. We can get into the nitty-gritty of numbers if anybody wants to ask questions in a little bit, but we did break out the Burke Estate athletic facility and field improvements. There is a rather high number of $12.6 million there. I would say that represents the most grand of athletic facilities in terms of the options we proposed, and it doesn't necessarily mean the school district said, hey, that's what I want to do, carry that forward. But from a budget planning standpoint, we're trying to be conservative. We're trying to plan to have enough money to do what you want to do until you tell us what you want to do, and then we can scale it back appropriately. And then the last item is the BCS findings over at Hillside. So there's another subcategory of about $6.4 million down there. I think that pretty much, oh, we've got one more slide. So we've covered a lot of ground since being hired in late July. We've been all through 300,000 square feet of building space. We've seen your site, your outdoor amenities. Everything on the left is what we've done to date. Everything on the right is what we need to go moving forward, and so we're at a nexus of decision-making here. We've provided our professional expertise. We've given you our recommendations. We also understand that the school district and the community don't have an open wallet and unlimited amount of funds to spend on this, and there has to be some buy-in. There has to be a lot of buy-in from the community. So the bottom line of our budget recommendation was about $62 to $65 million. And again, that is a collective gasp usually when we deliver that information, but like I said, we're here to discuss what you need to prioritize beyond that $65 million number, and how do we bring it into a reasonable, acceptable, tolerable reality for the community to support? And that's where we are today. So I can leave it open for questions, starting there.
Can I jump in just to think of some foundational questions? Number one, these numbers, you know, we have, certain parts of our projects are reimbursable by New York State. These are net numbers, or these are just gross numbers?
And honestly, like, these are just gross numbers, and especially with the athletics that, as, I mean, obviously, the district didn't say, you know, they were just, when they designed different options, they were just saying, this would be like if you did everything, you know, the whole Burke Estate kind of a thing. So this is kind of representing like all high-level numbers, and these are just hard construction numbers on that. And until we have a final plan and can send it to the state for review and all the rest, we would need that information from you to find out what the net number would be.
So can I ask a question? So functionally, let's say we have a generic project piece that we know the state is going to reimburse us on.
But the thing is, so like, as an example, the fields, they would reimburse up to a certain point, but there are certain, it's not like an unending number, like, so you couldn't put up a $100 million bond and get full funding. There are certain building aid units that, the state is an example, likely, and again, this is the recommendation, to do the kind of full, like, create a whole facility at Burke Estate, but it just kind of shows you what it would cost to do something of that, you know? You know, and Matt had mentioned that, that's like the big, that's like the big, the big huge plan with the parking lot and everything else. But the, we would not, it would be unlikely we would receive full state aid funding on that if we were to do one field, because there is a certain dollar amount for like exterior work that you're going to be capped at. So it would likely, I'm just, again, not having the numbers in front of me, you know, something of at this level, like at $5 or $6 million, we're going to receive 42% back at this, like, it would be anything above that number, and again, without, you know, speaking to the state, but we had a little bit preliminary conversation about this and just, and how I know some of the things work. There's a certain amount of building aid available, but at a certain scope, so the base number can't exceed a certain amount of number. Like, we would probably have, I'm just, like, there may be a tolerant, like, up to $30,000, $30,000, $40 million, or, you know, $25 million of building improvements, but for the site work, because they're going to look, as they said, they see the BCS, I think you actually referenced the exact reason. The state is looking at it like, okay, you don't, you know, there's other things you need to do, and we're not going to fund you, you know, back on $12 million so you can build, you know, three fields. Like, if you want to do that, you're going to be paying for it locally. So, you know, makes sense why the state wouldn't just unilaterally fund everything, you know?
The second part of that same question, so with things that are deemed in the BCS to be critical, or, you know, that second half of the rubric, does the state?
Those would, yeah.
Those would?
Yes, 42%.
Okay.
Yeah, like any mechanical, those sort of things, yeah.
I just wanted to bring that out. I think I've mentioned it before, but one of the things, one of the time factors that we're facing as a district is, and by any reasonable expectation, you know, our reimbursement rate from New York State is going to go down in the near future. So that's something, as we look at the work and consider whether we're in a position where New York State's going to reimburse us for it, this is, we're at a critical juncture where, you know, the taxes we pay as taxpayers to New York State are going to fund a significant portion of that. That may not be true even 12 months down the road, so, but I'll open up for questions.
Yeah, question on that. Do we have, is that definitively going to change in the next, does anyone know? When will that change?
No, I mean, I think people are just, I think because there's been a lot of talk around the state aid in general, that in terms of the evaluation on the foundation aid and things of that, that there's, I think the factors, I think what Alex is speaking to, those are expense-driven aids, and a lot of the data that determines the percentage of reimbursement you get back on particular expenses is driven on old data, like old census data from New York State. So I think now that they're doing, I guess, there's been, and again, this is from folks at the state level who have been kind of saying, you know, just to be mindful, that there could be changes across the way the state funds us both for foundation as well as expense-driven aids. If, in fact, they, they're doing an evaluation to see if that individual districts like, would be dropped based upon current wealth factors, I guess, would be, yeah, I mean, that would be, yeah.
So just a couple of data points on that. So the wealth factor, which is, forms part of the reimbursement rate, is based on data from the year 2000, and New York State has put in, I think it's like a blue-ribbon commission to reevaluate and refresh that data, and that, I think they're working on like a 12-month timeline, and that's going to become before the budget. So there's no definitive thing coming down from New York State or NICE Ed, but all the pieces are lining up where it's, we can reasonably assume for our planning purposes that it's prudent to think that things are going to change and not for the better.
For the worse, right, for the worse.
Yeah.
For less reimbursement.
Yes, correct.
Of course, on projects and on curriculum stuff.
Yeah.
So just a question for the presenters. You said that the field number was sort of reach-for-the-stars kind of thing, right? So that has some flexibility. The other one for Farragut and the middle school and high school, that number is pricing just the year one, two, three, and not including the deferred work, correct?
Year one is out of, and correct me if I'm wrong, Maureen, but year one is out of your capital budget.
Yes.
So that is going to be decided in May, and when the voters decide the budget vote, you'll have a fund.
You can enter fund transfer recommendation to handle some of the critical.
Those items are like the highest priority. Those are health and safety and wellness items that you should not wait any longer to address, and there's not a lot of them, but there is a need to address them. For years two and three, that is essentially what we would consider the bond referendum, all the work that we discovered in the BCS and beyond, so, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, and I guess just generally, that work is what you would consider like required, not, that's not necessarily like above and beyond what is needed, right, for?
Well, I mean, I would say that from a PBDW standpoint, they've analyzed the entire building and said there's a space deficiency, and we agree with that. So yes, that is a, I mean, unless you want to deal with overcrowding and the repercussions of that in your instructional environment and your other spaces, yeah, I think that is a requirement. It's totally a recommendation we support. All of the BCS items and the findings that we made and recommended to be resolved are definitely a recommendation. Where you get into splitting hairs on need versus want is athletic facility. Yes, there's a loss of playing hours, and yes, there is a need. To what scale you do that and how you address, and I think that's really a discretionary decision on the board.
Understood. And my last question, I think you answered it already, but there's no prioritization or priority item that is not spoken for in that year one?
Yeah, if it's a health, safety, and wellness item that is of the highest priority, it was either put into year one, or if it was an item that could be deferred, because it's not a high priority item, it wasn't listed as a level-one priority.
Understood, thank you.
I think there were a few number-one priorities that had to go to the bond, like the backflow, like, different things that, that were like, if we had the money today, you would recommend doing it.
Of course. I mean, if there are items that outstripped your capital outlay for it, or your budgetary transfer, then we had to move it into the bond, because you just, you're not going to be able to pull it out of your operating budget.
Questions, comments? Can I, I guess I'll start off a little bit, you know, sort of my, because you had mentioned a couple of times that the next step, apart from what you're going to do, is what you need from us, which is some sense of scope, direction, you know? And I'll just say this for all of us, like, my two sort of starting points, number one is that what is most attractive to me is that the dollars spent are closest to the students, you know? That's, you know, and we can talk about what that is a little bit. The other aspect, I think, you know, living here almost 20 years, I feel like, there's a distinction I make in my head that, you know, this town has a financial ecosystem of, you know, I think, we tend to look at it as like a suburb of New York, and the things that we do here are just sort of the next step in suburbanization, but I think that's incorrect. I think that a lot of people rightfully look at Hastings as sort of like a, what's described to me as a small New England village, and there's a certain financial reality and ecosystem that keeps it that way, or is part of it inextricably, that personally, I feel a need to respect. And so, you know, putting those two things together, it is defining what's most critically needed by the students, what dollars solve that most directly, and with an eye towards does that preserve, does that preserve what the village needs from us as a school district? You know, that's where I'm starting from. So, so how declarative do we want to be? So if I'm, you know, if I'm off the back of an envelope, I know that we do not have enough space, especially in Farragut Middle School instructionally. We have 24 classrooms, leaving aside the fifth grade. 20 of those are undersized by New York State standards, leaving aside all the other things. I know that from a field standpoint, we don't have enough field, like a farmer doesn't, can't grow enough, we don't have enough field to run the number of programs that we have. It's not about the number of students, it's about having the number of programs, having them, you know, all the different teams. So my back-of-the-envelope starting point would be, we consider one field. It would be that we consider the cafeteria conversion, allowing us to free up space, and that would be, for me, where I would start. I feel like, you know, we can define what's the ideal amount of space that we can have, but I always feel like, you know, even in my own house, as small as it is, there's parts of it I don't use, you know, are just sit there, and I feel like it's really hard to say that this is the exact number we need. I feel we just need to start with what works on some level, and we also make it work on some level, and then we leave the options open. And one reason we look at a complete plan is that if five years down the road, or 10 years down the road, other generations want to say, you know what, we still need more. We haven't closed off options from them, we have a groundwork for them. So that would be my sort of, my options. And part of that is also because from a state aid standpoint, the cafeteria would be, whatever I understood, is state-atable.
Because eligible for building, correct?
Right, and one field would be state-atable. So those fit within, you know, a certain fairness where I think the New York State is rightfully helping us develop the capital assets that we have here, and also letting us take care of the maintenance issues, because it's critical to understand that when maintenance issues don't live on the capital expenditure side, they have to live in the current budget. And it's like, you know, it's like, you know, you fix a doorknob every week in your house instead of replacing it, that's what happens all over the building in so many ways. And so those three things, one field, one building space for Farragut Middle School students, and taking care of the critical repairs, that's my sort of, I think, fair baseline for discussion, but.
So Alex, just to play facilitator, when you say cafeteria, you're bringing in with that the renovation then of the current space back to create classroom space?
Yes.
You're bundling that?
Yes, I think there's a lot of bang for the buck. Solving critical needs, absolutely, you know, with the cafeteria and the single field. But I also feel from a community standpoint, you know, the field, like, it's not mentioned enough that, you know, we don't have a lot of municipal facilities in Hastings, you know? The fields that the school has are sort of double as the fields for the community, and just the idea of having kids out there, not just the sports to play, but just to be out there. We don't have to shut the fields down in the summer and chase kids off because the grass has to rest. Nights like we had, you know, homecoming this year was like such an amazing time of seeing like all these people out in the community, off their cellphones, talking, running around. It was such a beautiful night. I mean, it really, it was, the idea that we would do that more often, the idea that we would do it right here, is really attractive, and that's not a, that's not a critical need, but I think it's just, if we're solving a critical need and we're also enhancing the community at the same time, I think it's really attractive. And I think when we look at the cafeteria addition, the idea of how it gets the kids around the building, how it gets them out into the playground, it's just, as a parent has had two kids go through the school, I see it working on a fundamental level. I don't see it being a white elephant kind of space. I see it being sort of like a critical heart infrastructure-wise. So, so, sorry, that's a long answer, but yes, I do think that that's what I would start. Any other thoughts, observations? No?
I would just, in sort of contrast, I guess, to what you're saying, which I very much appreciate, it feels very overwhelming to think about this. I mean, you know, I think we want to build a new kitchen, and we want to have new windows, and what if we can't do all of that? And how do we begin to think?
Joey, the microphone, I don't think.
How do we, if we want to build a new kitchen and replace all the windows, but we can't, you know, what do you do? And everyone, we all know that personally, we know it in our own homes, and we live in this little community where everybody's invested. I mean, I can see, tell by people who are sitting here tonight, and people who devote their time on the board and work here. And I don't feel like I can even weigh in at this moment. It feels like a lot to digest, knowing what all the needs are going ahead this year with budget and negotiations and potential bonds and fields, and so much, there's so much that we need. And it's a little frustrating that we just can't come up with the best way to do all of it and do it, and we're going to have to make some very difficult decisions, and it's both short-term and long-term, and I think, I know we'll come to it, we have in the past, and we will again. And we'll work with the community and figure out something that can work. Like, not everybody's going to get everything that they want and need, but I trust the process that we'll get there, but, and I have enormous respect for all the work that's been done, and all the presentations we've had, and Maureen, I can't even imagine how much time and energy you've put into this, and Joe. So I'm just expressing my, ooh, really go.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll go.
Yeah, and I mean, before, I mean, if anyone else wants to jump in, but also, real thanks to the rigor you brought to this whole process. I mean, that's what stood out when we met with you last year, and to see it time and time again. In fact, you know, the ceilings that you were referencing, I mean, dramatic, but, you know, it was that the piping was holding the concrete in place, you know, and.
That with children in the classroom?
Yeah.
That was a big, you know, a big sign for things, so.
I want to just say one more thing to what I said on top of that. And my hope is, going forward, that we can do it this time around. And my hope is, going forward, that we can do it this time around and not have to go through turf wars or some equivalent of that, because that was really ugly. And we don't need to do that, we can do better than that, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? David?
Yeah. I think from what I'm hearing from people around where I live in my little section of town, is how palatable this is going to be towards the taxpayer, and at what point are we going to kind of understand that piece? Because I think people are asking, yeah, I see the need, but how much is it going to increase? Because as much as we say we need to fix the windows and everything, people want to fix the windows in their own house too, and is, are they, how much are they willing to invest in the school district, with it also directly impacting their home value with how well the school is maintained? So, at what point do we get to a place where we know that?
Well, I mean, we can give, Maureen and I can give an answer, this might be a time L.A.N. I mean, part of it is the board, too, is challenging this is, is begin to do what Alex is board president, begin to narrow it down, because that then lets L.A.N. begin to start to run some numbers, work Maureen on that, on all the various ins and outs that she explained earlier, because there's no simple answers, you know? Right? In New York State, there's no simple answer. But it's just narrowing it down enough to give that kind of estimate, that then you can get some rough approximation, and I'll play in English, what's this macro number, but what's that household number? What's that household number? Again, an estimate, but it isn't narrowing it down. So, I guess I would, Dave and the rest of the board, challenge you to kind of work with what Alex has done here, to kind of begin to potentially narrow, to try and give the clarity that Jody's asking for, because then you'll get to where you want to get estimates, please, estimates.
To Bill's point, you know, because the scope of work, and to Maureen's point, determines, the scope of work will determine what New York State is going to be reimbursing on. And that is a huge, because our reimbursement rate on those things is 43%, it's a huge fluctuation. So, I think if we determine as a board what the scope may be, we're going to start to get numbers, and we can probably put it in, you know, this amount of tax per 10 million spent or whatever, you know? We can quantify it so that it can just slide around based upon what the gross number is going to be, you know?
Right, and get, like, you have to get the financial advisor involved, and they have to do a reading, and, you know, we have a sense of our, we know what our bond rating is, but that they also have to be engaged in this process.
Yeah, I mean, if I may, Superintendent, say just a quick couple of things. I mean, Maureen's worked incredibly hard on this, been at this for over nearly three decades. I've been in a lot of places. Hastings has got to do something now, and it's got to find the right balance between educational quality and excellence and what's affordable for the community.
Why do you say that?
Why? Well, I think the evidence we've seen in this complex is, as hard as we work here to keep it neat, clean, and safe, what they found this summer, if children had been in that classroom, and something had happened, we would be in an incredibly different conversation right now in here. My fresh eyes, when I walked into this building, I love this place, but we have a way overcrowded middle school. Middle schoolers naturally do this. If you're in the hallways with me, thank goodness, I'm 6'5", because it is so crowded and tight. We have a wonderful cafeteria, but it's so crowded and tight. That space needs to get shifted over to be, to have a state-of-the-art, not fancy, but a state-of-the-art community center, school center here, still preserving the courtyard, giving a space that is like what you have up at the Hill. I've not met a parent yet who doesn't like the multipurpose room up at Hillside, and rightly so, there was a debate in Hastings about what to do. So, let me say the other thing, Superintendent, I honor debate, I honor difference, I honor discussion. We will have debate, difference, and discussion, but we got to get something on the table for you as a board to understand what you'll then commit to, or not, and then we will help the community understand it, and then the community will vote. But I would be irresponsible as a superintendent to say, gosh, a while ago there was a fight, so we're not going to do it. Gosh, we've not done anything in a while, and it's very confusing, we're not going to do it. We have things coming at us on the operating side, negotiations and all the rest, we're not going to do it, as opposed to we are very thoughtful and smart here, let's narrow this down from a bond standpoint, get to a place where you as a board can run those numbers, get some clarity, then we begin to analyze, build out the case statement, talk with the community about what's it going to cost you in each household if we do this, what it also means on the operating side, as we're bringing forward a budget, and begin to present the case, and the voters will decide. But we don't prejudge the democratic process.
And to your point, to your question also, I think that, to my mind, what happened in Austining was instructive, where Austining, for a very long time, has been an under-resourced district. Ten years, and they were suffering from crowding, overcrowding, old buildings. 10 years ago, if I'm not mistaken, they either didn't bring the bond up, or their bond failed. And for the past 10 years, Austining had gone through an increasing, increasingly dire amount of crowding. They had a cafeteria where, because it was crowded, they, each grade had 15 minutes to eat. They had classrooms that were cut up into four slices, and it goes on and on. And what ended up happening is this year, Austining passed the largest school bond in Westchester County history, $210 million, because things had gotten so critical in so many ways, they kind of needed to just clean the slate, they're building a new middle school, maybe even a second building, I don't know. But the point is that, you know, not that, I'm not saying that that's the situation in Hastings, but I do think that there's enough criticality here that it needs to be looked at, you know, as a now thing, so.
And if I may, and then I'll, listen, my job's to facilitate board you lead. Athletic fields, the state-of-the-art now anywhere is a mixed approach. Natural turf matters. Many of you know I have a deep background in particularly soccer. My two oldest son, my college son's a college soccer coach, he's now in global sports management on soccer. You want options, you want a natural turf, but we are losing opportunity time for our athletes. And there was a wonderful story here about a community leader saying, I want kids on the field playing, but I keep getting pushed off. The reason is because if we wear out the fields, the natural turf, our own students can't participate. So, I really do think there's a town-gown opportunity here. I think you've put forward, Alex, a specific narrowing, which is a start, which gives us a balanced approach, and to go in this very thoughtfully about the environmental issues, the health issues, but how in Hastings you can have a balanced approach, not everything artificial, but some balanced approach that meets the needs of our students and meets the needs of the community, to give some active play space, active involvement space. And this year, it's been dry, which is also wearing out the fields one way. Last year, we lost 70 contests, just in the fall. That's educationally insufficient.
We missed, we missed 70.
We had.
Either canceled or.
We had to move them, we had to shift them around and all the rest. If we keep having the kind of conditions we're having with lack of rain, we're going to be worrying about playing on dirt fields. And that, so I think it's a modest approach for some pretty significant issues here. And so, I'm, at the end of the day, let me stress, I will be the first in line to listen to where the vote lands. So, it's about, though, providing the community a chance to understand and figure out where we are, and then vote on that.
Yeah. So, what are our next, what's the next step for us to get them the information they need?
I mean, one tool that we have in our toolkit is to go to the state and ask them for an assessment of the project and the eligibility for building aid. We do that in the form of a preliminary submission. Preliminary submissions are required whenever you add over 10,000 square feet of instructional space or 10,000 square feet of space to a building. In this case, with this scope of work, I think you're at like 9,600 square feet of added space. So, it's not required, if you're honoring the intent of it's not over 10,000, but just to get a litmus test of what is eligible and what is not eligible. It seems like this would be a good decision to go down that path. What I would say is, the drawback is time. When you go to the state education department, we're no longer in control of our schedule, and we're going to wait for them to review it. And the current backlog at the state for preliminary submission review is four months. Before we go to the state with a preliminary submission, we have to make a seeker determination on the project. That seeker determination is at least two board meetings, right? So, I need to know, our firm needs to know, our design team needs to know, what scope of work we're evaluating, the environmental significance, and whether or not it will have an environmentally adverse impact, to give you an opinion so that you can act and make a seeker determination. Right now, the scope of work is broad, and I understand that you may want to narrow it down. I think you should do that first, because if you're going to disturb over five acres of property and create an athletic facility, that may have a more adverse environmental impact than a tighter scope of work. So, I think, right now, I would encourage you to go back, don't think about the time. We always think about how to get you from point A to point B as fast as possible. That efficiency is the most cost-efficient way to deliver our services, it's the best way to get you from point A to point B quickly. But at the same time, if you need that information from the state education department, we can pump the brakes and say, look, we're going to see what they say, we're going to work with Maureen, we're going to work with the board, we're going to say, this is the scope of work, we need to analyze, we'll give you an opinion based on our evaluation of seeker, you will act on that opinion and make a determination. When that process is done, we take that document and a lot of signed forms, and we submit that to the state, and we get in line, and we wait for them to review it. I hope that they're faster than four months. If everything played out quickly, and we did two board meetings, made a determination, went to the state, hypothetically, if the state operated quicker than we're accustomed to, which is very rare, we could get to a bond referendum by May. If we didn't need to go to the state, and we didn't need to do a preliminary submission, at some point before you put a bond up, you still need to make a seeker determination. So, regardless, at some point, we have to start that process.
So, can I ask you if there's some, you know, it sounds like that's a delay, that's a significant delay, and significant, you know, potentially even more significant. In your, you know, can we sort of proceed with a professional opinion, back-of-the-envelope, where, you know, the same way you said there's a certain cutoff, where you say, I'm not sure they're going to, you know, state aid is going to come through, where in your professional opinion, you can say, it is likely that what you're describing is going to be reimbursable or by the state? Like, can we proceed with just sort of fundamental knowledge that you have from working in New York State for all this time?
Yeah, I mean, based on our professional, you know, expertise, all of the work is going to be eligible for building aid, but as Maureen said, there's a maximum cost allowance, an MCA, that limits the amount of site work they can fund through.
But you can guide, you can give us some, you can guide us through that, right?
Of course. I mean, I think Maureen did a really great job of describing the, you know, the limitations. So, I think it's $5 million on site improvement work, and the eligibility for building aid, if you tie that into an instructional improvement, is whatever your building aid ratio is.
42.4, yeah.
So, you know, back of the napkin, $5 million at 43% is roughly $2 million of the $5 million athletic facility project that will be eligible for building aid.
Gotcha.
And same goes for all of the other improvements, including the additions up there. Now, I would like to take a more conservative model and assume some things aren't, I know Maureen would align with this.
Yes.
We want to, we want to under-promise and over-deliver, right? So, we want to be conservative in our outlook, we want to make sure that if we think it's 40%, let's tell you guys it's 30%, and if it comes in at 40%, everybody will be happy. But if I tell you it's going to be 30% and it's less, everybody here is going to say, what happened?
Okay, but I think that's very useful, that we're dealing, I'm not surprised, but a very informed opinion, it's not agnostic. So, we as a board can determine a scope, and then we can, you know, match that scope up with your professional opinion and experience, and give us a sense of what we're actually talking about, to a fair degree of accuracy, let's say. So, it sounds like the next step is for us as a board to, you know, meet again. What's the next meeting we're going to have with regards to?
I want to follow up on your third point, if I may, that one thing we've been talking about, and we did three opening meetings with the faculty over the last two weeks, and one thing is we were communicating with the faculty, great concern about the operating budget and what might happen with the bond, and I'm acting this out, that there's some core infrastructure needs, so just think about that classroom roof. So, if worse came to worse, and to me, that's worse, if we can do nothing on the fields, we can do nothing about the overall overcrowding, but we've got some, well, I call plainly those guts of this building we got to pay attention to, we got to do that.
Absolutely.
If we don't.
Absolutely. I mean, this would be easy to do if there were things on here that were wrong.
Right, so we've got front year already a pressure point, because that's got to be in the operating.
Correct.
The next out year is, you want to get that into a bond to take the pressure off operating, I'm acting this out on purpose. So, because if you don't get it out of here, it pushes down what else we can do with operating, so that's personnel, it's curriculum, it's programs, it's the kind of things we heard earlier on how get better on our outcomes where we have the gaps. So, that's why it's so important for us to take advantage of the bond opportunity and be very smart about that in Hastings, right? Is that's?
I agree.
Fair analysis?
Yeah. Yeah, as I said, it would be really easy to make this discretionary decision-making process if there were things up there that just, hey, that, you know, Matt, you're an architect, aesthetically, that would be beautiful, we just don't need it. But everything up here is things you need. You know, whether or not the scale of the athletic facility, we can all agree to disagree on, you know, everybody will have their own differing opinions, but there is a usage issue. And so, there needs to be, there's something that needs to be done, whether or not it's up four, or five, or 10, or 12 million, that's up to you, this is your decision, and we'll take your lead.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? We're going to see them again, but.
No, I was going to ask something similar on what the state reimbursed, like, if you could take this list and tell us, like, this is not reimbursable at all versus this is generally reimbursable.
Everything on the list is eligible for building aid until you exceed the maximum cost allowance for the building and for site work.
What's the building allowance?
That.
It's individual teach district, and it depends on when they look at your overall BCS and understand the bonds that you typically do, so that's something that has to come from the state. But I would say, I think we recognize, and just kind of, we put, they priced everything out, I think everyone knows that, you know, this would not be something that we should, like, the total of this is way beyond what, you know, should be included in a bond, because, as you can see, beyond the hard construction, all the escalation and soft costs and all the rest, so, I mean, I guess the question is not to say, like, is there, I mean, I guess, I'm thinking about modeling, like, a different, I'm just making up things now, like, a 30 million, I'm just making up a number, 30 million, but all in, so 30 million all in is not, it's like 20 million and change of construction, plus then all the other costs that go along with it, and then understanding what the cost would be, assuming the 42% and the 30% aid ratios, and probably where some we know will have, like, at a $5 million for the site work, that that would likely, but anything above that would be not state aid eligible at all. So, kind of putting it into different scenarios, because I think even with the addition, I'm just throwing this out there, but obviously, there's a world in which we're like, okay, the scope has to change in that, even that cafeteria in terms of design, right?
We follow your direction.
Yes.
We can only give you our recommendations.
No, no, I know. But I'm just saying, like, sometimes, like, scope changes in terms of, like, we can't afford that, is there anything else that can potentially be designed that would be less expensive?
Ah, gotcha.
Like I'm talking about, even in an addition, right? It doesn't have to be, I mean, it's beautiful and it's wonderful, but are there additions that are less costly?
Gotcha.
You know, in terms of square footage, I mean, if there were things in which we rather scale the back of it, or different things that we were adding to it, I don't know if it would be worth it, but I just think to kind of understand what that looks like.
I think, though, you have to understand that this building is over 50 years old, it is subject to the discretion of the state historic preservation office.
That's true.
And so, there are requirements in order to meet the state historic preservation office that are non-negotiable.
Yep.
So, when you go through the seeker process, we notify SHPO, and we give them the project preliminary submission for their review, and if they look at the proposed additions, based on PBDW's experience and our experience working with SHPO, those are a contextually appropriate solution.
That's right, that's right.
In other words, they are contrasting from the historic character, preserving the original historic character of the building, and they are separable from the original historic character of the building, which means you could bring it back to its original look and appearance. So, I think their solutions are completely appropriate, there's always ways to make things more affordable and less expensive, but if they were to go with a masonry, more traditional approach, if you will, I don't think SHPO is going to receive that very well.
No, I agree. No, I just know a little smaller, Matt, like, in terms of maybe some of the interior, like, the second floor finishes in the high school wing, like, as much as they'd be nice and needed, like, I'm just curious if we were able to break those down further, just so people understand them.
Yeah, I mean, from a modernization standpoint, it's a suggestion and a recommendation, it's not a critical failure. So, I think, you know, when people are asking, what can we remove, all of these things we think are necessary. To what degree you think they're necessary, to what degree you prioritize them in your own minds and your own opinions, that is up to you, but at some point or another, you're going to replace the flooring, you're going to replace the ceilings, and you're going to have to contend with those finish deterioration problems.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think anything on the building condition survey, and again, we could get into more detail future meetings, but they, they were, Matt and Danielle went through those with Joe and myself at a very granular level. Like, so there's much of that that arguably could have been included in this bond that is put either in deferred.
Right.
So I think to David's point and how I look at it, I think it's very important for you to look at that deferred bucket, too. Now, some of that deferred bucket, which is a big, also a large number, includes if, if there were future additions put on Farragut, right? So those are things that, you know, that PBDW shared, like, just much grander, like, kind of multi, you know, like, in 10 years or now or so, if there was a need you to add these other additions to, like, where the bridge is, which again, is not included in this. But it is important to keep in, in mind those, right? Because as Matt originally said, you know, you have to think about, okay, there, those things don't, there may be things there that don't go away and maybe not necessary to do today, but may be necessary to do in five years or, you know, so you have to also tear that into how much you can afford now because that debt will still be being paid when you may need to address some of those other deferred items in the future.
Can I have one other question about the state aid? So kind of playing this out as a worst case, if we have agreement on whatever the, the number is and we vote on it and it goes through and the 42% is still reimbursable, is that, like, that's a given? Is there an urgency in terms of timing that we get this kind of in now because it very well will change in the next budget year and it won't be reimbursable, at least not nearly as much as 42%?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think if, once those formulas change, they're changed, moving, you know, just like we've operated under those for a very, very long time. If they were to be recalibrated, it would change. And I think, just again, not, we, like Alex, like, we hear, we're just sharing what we're, we're told or hear at different, from state level, kind of things around the state aid. But they are, the meeting I was just on the other day, which was really about negotiation, but it did touch upon that, you know, that it looks, that you should expect that western districts will not fare well with this evaluation that they're doing on, on just state aid formulas in general. And we know some of our neighbors, I mean, we're very fortunate and happy to get the 42.4. I think Rivington only gets like 20% currently.
Wow.
Yeah.
So I mean, I would just want to underscore that for everyone that's listening, that, like, now is the time to act because it's only going to cost more later and the reimbursement is really in jeopardy if we wait another year. So I just want to underscore that.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions, comments? No? Well, Matt, Danielle, I want to thank you. It was a wonderful presentation and look forward to seeing you again soon. And any other wrap up you want to add or?
Just in the public record beneath their presentation is the memo on how we're planning on how we're handling communications and will, just so it's in the public record. You can see it there. It's posted.
Okay.
Our communications plan.
Yeah. So thank you both. I'm sorry.
The only, the only one thing I was, I wanted to highlight, which I thought was very interesting, and of course, these are budgetary numbers, but the square footage number is, is double or more than double than what we paid to build the Hillside addition. They're just, I mean, that, to me, and again, the cost, it's double, like, in terms of the construction cost now. So it's, you know, that arguably that would have been a, like, I mean, just to put this kind of number in context, because it, I've seen it, like, a little bit earlier, so I have some, I've been able to kind of, not even understand it, like, it was kind of shocking when I first saw it. Yeah. So, but just in terms of, and that, that's based upon what they're seeing in the market now for schools. I mean, we ended up, I think it was like $450 a square foot. We paid for Hillside and you're looking at, you know, double that right now is the proposed cost. So I mean, that's actually unbelievable to me that it went up so significantly.
May I add just some context then? COVID, supply chain issues, all the things you've heard about in the industry on the news. You are working on a historic building in a courtyard and you are applying a high-performance sort of vestibule entrance to the building, technically specialized cafeteria with kitchen equipment. Those infrastructure needs, the building systems that go along with that type of addition tend to be more costly per square foot than.
More specialized.
Even if we were talking about a less specialized addition in the same year, just to level out the plank a little bit.
Yeah. No, no, I meant not so much the design, but just the cost of doing, you know, we, we, we actually just got in under the window. I know that even six months after we bid that job, a lot of our colleagues were seeing like $600, $700 a square foot. So I just say that just to show you that would, you know, that, that in today's dollars, that, that bond would have been, maybe, not maybe double, but close to that.
Yeah, that's true.
Three million.
When, thinking about this timeline and the, and our high school students, if we were to pass these bonds or some modification of them, say in terms of, like, the construction of the field or the cafeteria, how would it impact our current high schoolers and when would the construction start and when would it be finished?
Okay. So, let's see. So we, we pass a bond in May. We begin working in June. It takes us, depending on what the final scope of work is, a $30 million job is a lot more or a lot less technically exhausting from a manpower design standpoint than a $60 million job. So if you were to go the $30 million job, I think in six months, we could deliver a set of construction documents to the, to the state education department for permitting. And we don't know what their backlog will be, but presently it's eight.
Twenty, 22 to 24 for engineering.
Okay. So six months later, we may have a permit. That puts you into June. We begin competitively bidding it, or perhaps we secure some co-op contractors who are ready to hit the ground running. And maybe we can do some work in that first summer. A lot has to fall into place to make that happen. If it grows to a $60 million project and we want to prioritize a phase of the work and get that done, we can put our team focused on getting the first phase of design in, get that into the state as soon as possible, try to accelerate or fast pace a certain portion so that we can do summer work in 2026. I, I would, I would resent or, or I would not be able to say how disruptive this is going to be, all right? You're going to lose the usage of your playing fields at some point. And what we try to do is we try to do all that work over the summer. The projects that we presented, for the most part, if we had from May, probably until maybe into the second week of September, we could likely do that over one summer for the athletic facility. Now, everything has to fall in place and we have to have the appropriate lead in time to secure contractors and materials. That being said, working in the courtyard is something where we have to separate contractors and, and, and from the rest of the people in the building, right? And there is a very natural, you know, under the bridge and access to that. So I think you could work on that throughout the school year, and I think it's going to be a necessary disruption in order to keep the cost of the project down. You can't just say, we're only going to work in the summer this year and then we'll finish it next summer. So it's going to be disruptive. It's going to be noisy. It's going to be loud. Construction always is. And there are a certain amount of disturbances and interruptions that puts into your instructional environment. We, you know, we'll do our best to isolate that two summers and put the urgency and the priority of the loud, noisy work as much as possible into the summer startup. And let's be honest, it's just going to continue throughout the school year and be, and be disruptive. If I said anything else, you know, we would be misleading you, really.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions? No? Again, thank you, Matt. Thank you, Danielle. And look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thanks for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
And I want to thank everybody here for their forbearance and patience this evening.
Could we let Ella go first?
Sorry?
But she can go at her time. Ella go next?
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
No, that's a good point. Oh, you're fine? You're okay? No projects due tomorrow?
Chem test.
Chem test? Oh, my goodness.
Do you want to present then?
You can do your part now so you can go home.
We, we had public, public comment next, but just a few minutes to have Ella give her student report, just courtesy. Thank you for waiting patiently, Ella.
Okay. So I've mentioned this one in the past meetings, but this Thursday is junior formal, which is at seven, and the last day to buy tickets is on the 21st during the school day. So students should definitely submit their payments ASAP. And then also this Thursday is Hillside Elementary School photo retakes, which is good to remember in case your child missed the initial day or forgot about it. And then a huge event coming up, which is the share Thanksgiving dinner. And prep days will be on Monday after school as well as Saturday and Sunday. And then sign up for prep days will be, and the actual dinner will be after school on Wednesday and Thursday. And you can also buy your share shirts for $20 at the signups. And then to participate in the dinner, you'll need a permission slip also due by Friday. And this is certainly an event I look forward to every year because it brings people, communities together and with like joy and fun and like just giving. It's really, really amazing feeling. And then next, also next Wednesday is a half day for schools and the following two days will be canceled because of Thanksgiving. And that's all I have.
Ooh.
Thank you. Good luck on the chem test tomorrow.
Wish us.
So now, again, I want to thank everybody for their forbearance and patience. I want to open up for public comment. Please respect the three-minute rule. At, at the mic, just state your name and address and our district clerk will call people up according to how they were signed up.
Daniel Lemmons?
Oh, which is Daniel Lemmons, too.
Good evening. I'm Daniel Lemmons. I have to say that I'm a little out of breath. The last time numbers left me out of breath was when I received a call that McKinsey Scott was going to give Lehman College $30 million. Unfortunately, I don't think she's going to be calling us. I'm a former parent.
That we could ask Elon Musk.
I'm soon going to be a grandparent of somebody in the school, longtime Hastings residence, educator for my entire career, both a teacher and an administrator, and village trustee for five years. So at this moment, I am empathizing with everybody in this room because what I have to say really comes from all of those points of view. And what I see is that we together are in a tight spot. I have three minutes of comments prepared, but unfortunately, I think I have to sort of just tear the script up at this point. And I think there are just a few key things that I want to say. I think you as a board have begun what sounds like a really productive discussion about what you've just heard. You know the nature of this village. You know how much we treasure the character of it and you know the way finances will impact that, have impacted it and will continue to do so. 70% of the people in the village have no kids in the school. It's a big group of people, so we have this kind of social contract. I did have, I don't, now don't have, and I will again have, be part of the 30% really in a way. But we have a social contract and we have to work together to come up with something that works, that doesn't push us in a direction that we've been going already, to be just another one of those high-priced suburbs of New York, because I don't, I don't think that's where any of us want to be. What I see right now from what I, the numbers that I saw presented, and I think, I think that was an excellent presentation. I agree with you that, the comments that were made, that there was a thorough job done and there clearly is work that has to be done. But I think it will be a huge mistake, despite, I understand the concerns about state aid, but I think it will be a huge mistake for you to act quickly. You have a lot of work to do and I have to say I don't envy you, but there's an awful lot to sort down. The magnitude of this is eye-popping and the outcome will not be good unless it is processed in the right way. And what you've said, I think, is very important that you include the community and you cannot do that in a month. And unfortunately, if you try to pass a bond that encompasses what is here and what's presented, we are all going to be miserable. You don't want to go there. None of us wants to go there. What we, what, what I suggest you do, and this is just my personal recommendation, is try to filter out now the, the things that you were talking about at the end that are absolutely essential because it's clearly, there are those things. And then it's a longer, much longer deliberation that you have about, and I think you really do need to have this with the community, about what do we absolutely have to do and what is it that the community can bear knowing that we want to support the schools? That is our intent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Five years since I've been behind a mic on a policy issue and I'll tell you, it gives me some PTSD to sit here.
[laughing]
And understand what you're facing. And I had three minutes of statement as well. And I've Nancy Pelosi that ripped it up, left it at my desk. And I'll keep it very short because Dan said most of anything that I want to say. I, I think it's, it would be useful to have a basic rubric for you guys to use in thinking about the magnitude of what you're about to do. And $30 million breakpoint and $60 million breakpoint are actually kind of interesting because roughly, if you assume 3.75% interest rates and use your regular bond calculation calculator available online and look at the number of households in town, roughly, that's somewhere between $800 and $1,000 a household per year for 20 years. So for the $30,000 tranche, twice that will be twice that. That's a, a, a big number, especially if you view it in its entirety over the 20-year term of a 20-year bond. It's a big number. And asking people to cover $18,000 or $36,000, it's a big ask. And I'm going to second what my former trustee and colleague said. You start with the desperate needs and then maybe layer a want on top of that. That would be super great and everybody agrees on. But if, if the walls are falling down, you fix that first before you renovate the kitchen, you know, using the household analogy we heard earlier tonight. So good luck to you. Alex, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes. I'll tell you, I'm already having sort of, I understand the spanking you're about to receive and it's important work you're doing. And keep in mind the diversity we have in this community that you're out to preserve. And I, I appreciated you saying that at the start of this conversation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alan Golds?
Good evening.
Thank you. I'm Alan Golds. Not nimble enough to tear up the script. What I'd like to do is talk about the Burke Estate. 10 years ago, I was active in the campaign to present, to prevent artificial turf at Reynolds Field along with Dan. And after the bond was defeated, we helped pass a bond which gave us a modern grass field at Reynolds and overhauled the grass fields at the Burke Estate. And to your point, I would love to not go through the turf wars ever again. So I'd like to talk about what's happened in these past 10 years. First of all, if artificial turf had been installed at Reynolds, it would now be at the end of its 10-year lifespan. Any day now, it'd have to be carted away and replaced, possibly with funding from a new bond. By the way, the bond that passed 10 years ago that renovated Reynolds won't be paid off till 2031. 10 years ago, there were claims that artificial turf could be recycled, though we found no companies in the country capable of handling it. And a recent study found that hasn't changed. Almost all artificial turf ends up in landfills. 10 years ago, professional women's soccer players were suing to play all their games on natural grass as the men did. As of 2020, U.S. Women's National Team is no longer required to play on artificial turf. And in fact, all World Cup matches are required to be played on natural grass. So why do the athletes dislike artificial turf? Mainly because of injuries. Studies in the past 10 years have shown higher rates of knee and ankle injuries on artificial turf, specifically women and girls have suffered more ACL tears, which as we know can be devastating. Football players agree about grass. A survey released this year by the NFL Players Association found 92% of players prefer to play on grass. The executive director of the Players Association said, "Grass fields have lower injuries, a difference in which kind of chronic pain they'll be in for the rest of their lives." Looking at the bigger picture, in the last 10 years, the climate crisis has only worsened. Hastings has had severe flooding and our village has tried to do its part. We have EV charging stations, bike lanes, pollinator gardens, composting, green roofs, solar panels, even on the, even solar panels on the roofs of the schools. Installing artificial turf at the Burke Estate would be a huge environmental step backward for a site that, after all, is part of a wetland. As we know, the world is getting warmer. Within the last 10 years, New York State Department of Health published information about artificial turf fields quoting studies that found that when a thermometer climbs, artificial turf is 40 to 50 degrees hotter than natural grass. On a 78-degree day, surface temperature on artificial turf was 117 degrees. On a 98-degree day, and I've read a lot of this and I still find this hard to believe, but it's in the state report, surface temperature of an artificial field on a 98-degree day hit 178 degrees. A major rationalization for installing turf is that games on grass have had to be canceled. The board has cited only cancellation data from 2023, however. And in the fall of 2023, a year ago, we literally had one of the rainiest Septembers in history, whereas this year, as you've mentioned, we've had no rain for the last two months. We would love to see some cancellation data for the last 10 years and not just to cherry pick data from the worst of times. I believe artificial turf was the wrong choice 10 years ago. I believe the last 10 years have only made the choice worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to note, charitably, when, when the little sound goes off, that's three minutes, just in the interest of being able to fit everybody in here. So, it's not, it's not just a ringtone.
It's not just music.
Welcome, welcome. Hi. teachers.
And the sports.
And, pardon?
And the sports.
And the sports. My next point was, we understand how the condition of a school facility impacts a student. Our son ran cross-country and track, and his senior year, the track was closed because it was too dangerous to use. He went on to have a fine college-running career. But I'm here as an architect who's worked at large international firms and have worked as a project manager for cultural institutions in the National Park Service. Programming is essential for a project. It tells you what you're gonna build, what, when you're gonna build it, why you're gonna build it, and how you're gonna build it. And I'm gonna diverge a little bit from my script, because I was very, I'm very excited that you guys are starting to talk about the project and try to wheel it down. So everything goes out the door, and I want to talk to you about looking at other options for the, the dining, expanding the cafeteria. The one that was chosen at papers easiest, you put it someplace that nothing is, so everything else around it could get renovated. I think there's an opportunity to build the Washington edition, where you can extend existing cafeteria, improve it, make it wide, larger, and you'd also gain some instructional space down the second level. That may, that's one possibility. I think there, in Paris, back in the days of nineteen hundreds or whatever, they used to have a thing called a charrette, which shreds a cart, and people would be, students would be vying for a prize for the Beaux-Arts, and they, called the charrette, was a time that you sit down and you'd just quickly come through different ideas. And I think your architects could support you in that by coming up with other alternatives where they look at it, where they can put the, the expansion of the cafeteria in a location that doesn't have the impact of the, the type of addition that you're talking about, the courtyard. I think you spoke very well about what the things, the issues are in dealing in the courtyard, and maybe there's another alternative place, or places that can be considered that could meet that goal. I have to say, I'm not a fan personally of the courtyard. I think it's too large. It's not appropriate as a space for students to be. I think it's, it's a showcase, and kids don't like to be showcased. They like to hide and take their food places. So, you know, you might have a beautiful space that's never used, my prediction. So, thank you very much. I haven't been here for a long time. I'm very pleased to see Jody as friends a long time ago, and I really appreciate all the effort that you folks put into caring for our kids.
Thank you.
Or other people's.
Thank you.
Tracy Hyburn.
Hello.
Hello. I am speaking to you as a former parent, a former active member of the PTA here. I also did advocacy for Westchester-Putnam, I was the advocacy chair for Westchester-Putnam County PTA as well. So I was very involved in school funding and really how unfunded mandates impacted school, school funding. So I'm gonna just leap right to the bad news right here. As a result of this recent election, we are entering a deeply uncertain period that is likely to have an enormous impact on public school funding. The president-elect has called for the elimination of the Department of Education, as well as other policies, including the withholding of federal funding to states and individual school districts that have DEI policies and programs. The newly-created Department of Government Efficiency is looking to pay our two trillion dollars, which is almost thirty percent of the U.S. budget. It seems likely that federal funding for education will take a deep, a big hit. The Hastings School District currently receives over half a million dollars in federal funding that helps cover the cost of special education and related services, and reimburses the district for free and reduced-price school lunches for eligible students. The loss of these funds would have a real impact on our ability to cover costs for these vital mandated programs that help our most vulnerable students. Additionally, any reduction in federal monies to the New York State budget is likely to get passed down to the school districts, further increasing our tax burden in order to just maintain standards, programming, and resources for all public school students. This financial burden would be a significant one for our small district to shoulder. And given these real risks and uncertainty, I am asking the school board to consider the grand scale of this project. I was very happy to hear that immediately you are. It was very reassuring, because we do not want to exhaust our ability to pay for what our students really need in the future by asking the community to take on a significant financial obligation right now in these uncertain times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Van Loon.
Welcome.
Hi, how are you all? Well, I guess I have the privilege of being the first to speak in strong support, at least for one.
Can you give your name and just tell us who you are?
Yeah, Adam Van Loon. I've lived in Hastings-on-Hudson for nine years. For six years of that time, I've been a volunteer soccer coach, and I understand full well the financial concerns that have been raised here, but I have the privilege of, I guess, speaking first in strong support for at least one aspect of the proposal on the table today. And that's the proposal around artificial grass fields. We live in a time where we are trying to create as many opportunities as possible to have kids play sports, get off screens. And the reality is, most of what you've heard so far about artificial grass fields is simply incorrect when it comes to the latest technology, or is misguided in terms of the comparisons. There is no question that, in an ideal world, we would have professional soccer-grade grass fields here. They would cost an absolute fortune to maintain, and they would only be played on once a week by elite teams, right? That's the trade-off. We don't have that, though, right? We have a lot of kids who we want to see playing sports. Artificial grass fields allow for playability in all weather, including rain, drought, winter time. They are also in many ways safer and better for training. The technology has come a long way, and furthermore, they ensure that athletes actually are able to play a game where a ball is rolling smoothly and develop their skills better. And anybody like me, who has coached on many of the local grass fields, can tell you just how terrible condition many of those fields are. From the Dobbs Ferry waterfront to the Artsley Middle School, that's where I spend most of my time, but we've also got Burke Estate, where I've actually kicked around myself as a soccer player, and I can tell you that that is not good grass to play ball on. The last thing I would just say is that, on the financial side, there is an opportunity to offset some of that cost. Through more availability comes revenue generation opportunities as well, in terms of renting out fields to local youth clubs, who are desperately seeking more access to fields themselves. And the last thing that I would say is that the lighting, I'm not sure of the price tag in the proposal, did sound a little high to me personally, but on principle, having more lighting would be hugely, hugely valuable. Right now, we're in a world where, because of the time change and our geography, for basically five months out of the year, we can't use fields past 5:00 p.m., despite the fact that there'd be huge demand from that, particularly from older athletes. So I ask you to consider all of this when you're thinking about the scope of obviously what is a big and complex proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil.
Phil, what's the last?
I can't read the last name, and I don't have, probably.
Oh, he seems to have left. It's only, there's no Phil here, so.
Okay. Ed Hicks. Ed Hicks. John Cornfield?
Hello, everybody. Good evening. So, some background.
Who are you?
Yeah.
Who are, can you announce?
I'm John, John Cornfield. I am an alumni of Hastings High School, born here, raised here, graduated in 2016. I've been playing soccer on the Burke Estate since 2004, and throughout my youth career, I also played many years on the Portchester Club team, where we played on a turf field at Columbus Park. So I've got a firsthand account of some of the negative ways that impacted me, the, the burning I felt under my feet on a hot day when the sun is shining down. It's true, the fields do get like a hundred-thirty degrees, a hundred-forty degrees. It's not a sensation that I ever felt on a grass field. It led to breathing difficulties, you know, burns and scraping when falling. The one concussion I ever got in my twenty years of playing was on a turf field. When they had like concrete underneath the rubber, it made a bigger thud when I fell. So, anyway, let's see, so I played in high school here. We had a great team in 2015, 2016. Played college soccer in Vermont on a grass field. I coached for Greenberg United several years. We played on grass fields at Dow's Lane, at Scenic Hudson, under the lights, and the lights are a big thing. Whether it's a grass field or a turf field, lights would, you know, expand the amount of playing more than anything else. Parking is something I wanted to get into, that I think there's a real serenity on the Burke Estate, that the game ends and people can leave in all directions, disperse, that if there's a parking lot, like, right in the middle, as one of the graphics had, I think that the field would lose a charm that it never got back, that people couldn't leave, you know, with the kids running away, kicking a ball, having fun. It's like cars coming everywhere, that wouldn't be the Burke Estate anymore. And I wonder if there would be fences on the field? That would not be helpful. I believe last, the turf wars, there is gonna be a fence on the field, so we don't wanna take away the ability to play. I wonder about lines on a field? Having a turf field that has like nine-v-nine, seven-v-seven, eleven-v-eleven soccer lines, football lines, hockey lines? It just confuses people when they play, especially when I was coaching my, like, ten-year-olds, you know, they, they couldn't tell the lines. And so, I thought the fields looked moisturized, by the way. I was walking around them the other day. I think we must have a sprinkler system. They didn't look like drought-stricken fields. So I think they're in good condition. I think kids are happy to play, no matter the condition. They don't mind getting muddy. And, okay, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ed Hicks.
Good evening.
Hi, Ed Hicks, Hastings resident since 2015. Played soccer my whole life. I still play. I played Division One soccer in college, you know, countless hours. I should try to do the math at some point. I've played against every kind of competition from every place in the world. I, I play with, with dads. We, we have to play at Springhurst Elementary, Master School, you know, et cetera. That's, that's just us. We've never had a turf injury. I've never seen a turf injury in, in my countless playing, playing hours. And I do understand the point about professional sports in both directions, meaning if we try to compare our needs to professional athletes, it's gonna be very different. It's really an apples-to-oranges comparison. I mean, talking about, you know, the, the forces, the gravitational forces that these kids are exerting on the fields at the, at the sort of middle-school, high-school age compared to professional athletes is, is not an appropriate comparison. We also have to think about the technology advancements, in particular with, with cooling and environmental concerns. I think we just need to get some facts in front of us to evaluate and understand, you know, what are those now ten years later technologies that are available to us? And also just consider the proportionality of the proposal. I mean, if we're talking about one field, right, when we have Reynolds, we have, when we have the rest of the Burke Estate, you know, let's not, let's not expand that to a, a condition that all athletes or all students are gonna face. Also consider the useful playing hours of a artificial turf field gives you about four fields' worth of playing time over, over grass. So I think we just need to, you know, look at the data, look at the evidence, look at the technology and the current state, and then consider twenty years out. Resurfacing is about five-hundred grand. So if you wanna build that into the proposal, that'll get you twenty years out, right? So I think it's just, you know, let's look at the reasonable proportional facts of the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Aaron Golombesky.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see some of you again. Aaron Golombesky. I only mean that because I met with just some of you. I don't have any problem with anyone else. I had the, sorry, came out totally wrong. I had the privilege to present to the superintendent and the board earlier this year. I work in the turf-grass universe for a company called Turf Talents, and I don't know that I told the story as to why I work for that company, so I want to back up just a little bit. I played high school sports, minor collegiate sports. I was the athlete of the year at the University of Michigan, the official of the year at the University of Michigan in the club sports space. Sports are very important to me. I was on the Parks and Rec Commission two years ago, when David Downs, some of you know David Downs, came to us and said, "We really need an artificial turf surface in this community, if not this community adjacent one, for River Towns United." Shout-out to River Towns United. And he made a lot of sense. I mean, kids need to play. We don't want cancellations. We don't want them on screens, and I loved it. I went back to my wife, and I said, "Melissa, I think an artificial turf field makes a ton of sense." Now, she is a world-renowned landscape architect in sustainability, and she said, "You are out of your bleepin' mind." For all of the reasons that have been pointed out by several of the people who came before me with regard to environmental degradation and injuries that come from artificial turf surfaces. You don't get to build in a vacuum. When you put down an artificial turf surface, it impacts everything that is around it, the ecology, the substrate, the heat. Please don't think that you do this, and it's done. It's not done. A lot of actors, namely ecological actors, that don't have a voice here, are not going to be able to tell you how it impacts their lives. Take that into consideration. I did, and I found a company that I now work for called Turf Talents, out of the Netherlands, because the Dutch love water and they love soccer, and they figured out how to manage grass, to make sure that it's dry and available for playing time all the time. Enhancing grass through water management, a system called the Drain Talent that we work with, and hybrid turf, which is actually in play on Lincoln Financial Field for the Philadelphia Eagles, and Lambeau for Green Bay, allows you to have something close to artificial turf capacity while playing on natural grass and not having all of the environmental ramifications. I hope that we get to continue this conversation. I hope to speak with Lan. I think I've emailed you guys a few times and haven't heard anything back. I'd love to follow up on that. The point is, this is not a binary choice. Alex used that word several times earlier. It's not grass, and it's not plastic. There are things that exist in between, and I hope Hastings considers them as it moves to avoid these turf wars.
Nisha. Not talking about grass.
Okay. Perfect timing, then. Welcome. How are you?
So, hi, everyone. I'm Nisha Nunez. I'm a resident of Hastings. So, like I said, not talking about grass. But first, I wanted to thank Dr. McCursie and Dr. Simansky for their commitment to the data presentation. It's really a step forward in transparency that we've been asking for as a community, and it's evidence that you're hearing us and that you're listening to us. So, thank you. Second, I wanted to quickly echo Jody's comments. Hastings has always been a pillar of learning, a pillar of supporting innovation, curiosity in a rigorous, student-centered learning environment. So, I know, I would know that, because I'm a product of this learning system. Many of my teachers still work here, and I've also taught at the schools. But when I hear that we're comparing us to the state, that's a really low bar. And we have traditionally, and should always aspire to, very much outperform New York State. And that story, to me, didn't really say strong performance proficiency. And I say that with the lens of being a classroom teacher, a licensed special educator, a K-12 equity leader with expertise in staff development around MT-
artificial turf capacity while playing on natural grass and not having all of the environmental ramifications. I hope that we get to continue this conversation. I hope to speak with Lan. I think I've emailed you guys a few times and haven't heard anything back. I'd love to follow up on that. The point is, this is not a binary choice. Alex used that word several times earlier. It's not grass and it's not plastic. There are things that exist in between, and I hope Hastings considers them as it moves to avoid these turf wars.
Nanisha. Not talking about grass.
Okay. Perfect timing, then. Welcome. How are you?
So hi, everyone. I'm Nanisha Nunez. I'm a resident of Hastings. So like I said, not talking about grass. But first, I wanted to thank Dr. McCursie and Dr. Simansky for their commitment to the data presentation. It's really a step forward in transparency that we've been asking for as a community, and it's evidence that you're hearing us and that you're listening to us. So thank you. Second, I wanted to quickly echo Jody's comments. Hastings has always been a pillar of learning, a pillar of supporting innovation, curiosity in a rigorous student-centered learning environment. So I would know that because I'm a product of this learning system. Many of my teachers still work here, and I've also taught at the schools. But when I hear that we're comparing us to the state, that's a really low bar. And we have traditionally and should always aspire to very much outperform New York State. And that story to me didn't really say strong performance proficiency. And I say that with the lens of being a classroom teacher, a licensed special educator, a K-12 equity leader with expertise in staff development around MTSS, cultural competence and data literacy. Additionally, I wanted to point out that if any data point reflects what some of our trustees called small sample sizes, whether that be that is six students, those are six people. Those are six children who are the entire world to six families. And our data should be normed for similar performance around that disaggregated data that we saw. So the disparities are pretty glaring and repetitive, and they shouldn't be. I thank you again for the verbal commitment to meeting all the needs of all learners, and I hope for the transparency to continue around actionable next steps, real concrete measures other than like just theory or rhetorical ones. I heard a lot about MTSS in this presentation, and that got me really excited about some cohesive structures, K-12. But a lot of that focused on Tier Two. And I just wanted to say to the committee of all of you that really MTSS is about Tier One instruction. It's supposed to meet 80% of student needs, right? So when we're thinking about Tier One instruction, that's the day-to-day happenings in classrooms. What I didn't hear is how we are supporting our human capital on the ground to meet those diverse needs of learners, right? I did hear about the curriculum review, which sounds great, but I also didn't hear about who's actually at the table to lend their expertise about what are those barriers that are not getting the performance that we hope for, for all of our students, especially when thinking about subgroups like our L students and our special education students. What I did hear was a plug for that additional administrator, which is surprising to me because a PPS administrator doesn't historically like take governance over L students or English as another language. So that's just interesting to me as that that was the only plug. So I know this forum isn't for questions, but I just want to again hear how you're going to invest in our amazing human capital, our teachers who are supporting students every single day, especially being that this is a contract negotiation year, and the last one was quite contentious in terms of teachers. So how are we investing on those? Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, how are you?
Hi, I'm Sandra Franzen, and I'm with her. I'm with her 100%. Also in non-grass news. So I do want to talk about the data, and I do want to say again, a huge thank you. Transparency to me is always the way, always the way. So thank you. The big thing I saw there, I'm a mom of three kids, now two in middle school, one in high school. So very glad I'm no longer getting emails for them, all three schools. But I'm also on the SEPTA Board, so special education is a big deal to me. My three kids, between them, I've gone through the process of IAPs twice and the 504s twice. So the data points up there that really stand out to me are for kiddos in special education. And I saw, I believe it was a 48-point differential between our kids with special ed and our general population. To me, again, that's performance that we cannot hang our hat on. That's bad. It's just bad. And we need, and we can do better. And I want to say also, I'm from a family of educators. I believe teachers go into it because it's a calling. So this is not a knock on our teachers or on anyone, not on our staff, not on our superintendents. It's just we're not doing our kids justice. So a quick example of the elementary school, my youngest met all the requirements for MTSS, Tier One support, that's the 80%, general population at that time. And even though she needed the support, met all the requirements for it, she could not get that support. And she did not get it till maybe the last two months of the school year. Now, we're in special ed. So I want support. Also, just quickly, I am for expanding and supporting our buildings. All of our kids deserve it. Our teachers deserve it. Staff deserve it. And I think we can get there as a community. I know it's a hard lift for all of us, some more than others, but I think we can get there. And, oh, this is a quick one. I also am curious if we can dig into how many of the kids who do not sit for state tests have IAPs? I was asked and suggested that my child not sit. And so that just, I'm curious. And I think it's something we can dig into further. And thank you to all of you for all of your service.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Maria Grisafa. I'm delighted to be back. I'm talking about Science of Reading. Did anyone else get the curriculum synopses that were sent out this afternoon? I had to scrap what I was going to write because that email came in. Wow. Please read it. Phonics. Not even an official part of Hillside's reading curriculum, but they do do it. It's clear that our phonics instruction is sprinkled over the balanced literacy. It's not primary. That's a huge concern. My observations of balanced literacy go across four classrooms, kindergarten, first grade, second grade for my son, and current kindergarten for my daughter. So what I'm observing and sharing is backed up by the district's published curriculum. I became a reluctant semi-expert in three queuing when my son went through it in kindergarten and first grade. His guessing was so, so detrimental to his literacy learning. We're still struggling. I'm thousands of dollars deep into Orton Gillingham tutoring and neuropsych evals. My kitchen is not getting redone because I'm spending a lot of money on him and I love him, so we'll do it. So excerpts from the kitchen reading, kitchen, from the kindergarten reading curriculum. Students use all they know to read the books, looking at the pictures, and learn how to tell a story. It sounds benign, but I've done this with my son and now my daughter. That's where you insert the three queuing with the leapin' lion. You jump over, you leap, excuse me, over the unknown word, and you use context clues to eventually return to the word that, you'll hear this phrase a lot, that makes sense. So in Science of Reading, in pure phonics, when you get to a word you don't know, you access the decoding skills and then apply it, and then you move forward. So another, readers learn how to retell heart books. That's where, so my daughter just did this. That's where you memorize a book. And there was a big kindergarten celebration of it last month, and I was shocked that that was brag-worthy because you shouldn't memorize books and brag about it. So to quote again, "Students pay close attention to fine details in the pictures and start looking at and reading words they know." So that three queuing is what's called picture power. I have old handouts for my son. Picture power. If you don't know the word, you look at the picture and then you guess it. That's how, when he was six weeks into kindergarten, he could read the word elephant and the word Thanksgiving. When I took away the picture, couldn't read either. So the phrase "Hillside does Science of Reading" is said a lot, and it's true. We have foundations. That's our phonics program, but it's not taught, my favorite word, with fidelity. So please don't just trust my observations. It was emailed out to us today. Our published curriculum isn't Science of Reading-aligned, but it could be. Please hire a Science of Reading professional development trainer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby Gentman? Oh, Gentman.
Hi, how are you? My name is Bobby Gentman. I live at Three Bever Street. I'm a 10th grade student at Hastings High School and have directly raised over $13,000 for student athletes through the creation of the Student Booster Club and the work through the Hastings Booster Club. This has shown me that this is a need for the community. I'm not here to argue for or against turf like my predecessors at the meeting. I'm here to support the spending of our funds on athletics for our children, for our students, and for our community. Adding more athletic space and improving upon the space we currently have will positively impact the community and all of its residents. We need to have a place for all people to gather and thrive together.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Metzger. I want to talk about the big picture because we sitting in a room where we're talking strictly about school-related issues, which are critically important, but I think we have a bigger picture. First of all, I want to thank Lan. As an architect, what they did tonight was really spectacular. I thought they did a great job. But I fear that there are costs that they're presenting are going to be woefully underrepresented is what we're looking at from a national perspective coming up in the next few months. If the president-elect actually goes through with most of the projects that he's talking about, we're facing a great unknown. The cost of construction, I think, is going to go through the roof. He's talking about mass deportations. A huge amount of our workforce are these people that are going to be deported, and we're going to be scrambling to try and find people that can do the work, which means costs are going to go up. The cost for manufacturing, transportation, construction, and the cost of materials are all going to be going up. And if we make decisions today and put a budget together, I think we're going to find we're going to be woefully, woefully underrepresenting what we actually need if we want to move forward with this. Inflation is projected to increase due to this incoming administration, and that affects all of us in our day-to-day living, not just the cost to provide a great education for our kids. We're going to have a hard time putting food on our table. Some of us are now, fortunately, I'm under Social Security. This administration has traditionally looked to get rid of Social Security. They're going to look to get rid of Medicaid. They're going to look to get rid of Medicare. Our cost of healthcare is going to go up. If we're not cognizant of how that's going to affect our community and make decisions based strictly on the school, I think that's going to be a real problem. I think we need to be prudent. Maintenance is absolutely a requirement as an architect. I tell my clients, and someone alluded to this before, if your roof is leaking, you don't do a new kitchen. We have issues that have to be dealt with in the schools, no question about that. We need to figure out how to fund that and get them done. But for anything that is a want and not a need, I think needs to be put on the back burner. We need to look at this really carefully and defer making any decisions till we see how this thing is going to shake out starting in January. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello there. Jay Crowley, 29, Faragut Avenue. I've lived here for about seven years. I spoke here last week, so thanks for having me back. I will continue to-
Always welcome.
I will continue to support turf, but I do want to say that I'm also a sensitive taxpayer here, so I understand both sides of the argument. I think it would be really helpful for the community to understand what the cost savings would be for not having to maintain the grass, if we can break that down. I'm going to anecdotally speak about, I grew up in a small town in Massachusetts. My father is an elected selectman there. He's been there for 20 years. They went through these turf wars many years ago, and he has told me that in that town of Medway, they pay back the cost of the turf within 12 years. So that may not be the case here, but I think breaking that down might make it a little bit more palatable for some of the taxpayers here. I want to talk a little bit about two things that I didn't mention last time. I want to mention the community aspect of having turf fields or lights. And I think you can separate turf from lights. I think about the homecoming games that I went to this fall, and I think about how it was a unique opportunity to bring the community together. And I think about that moment where Hastings won the soccer game, and it was awesome. And all the children stormed the field, right? And to watch that from the hill and to be like, wow, this is awesome. This is what it's like to be part of this community. This doesn't have to be something that we do once a fall or twice a fall. This could be something where you have that energy every single weekend. When I grew up playing soccer in that small town of Massachusetts, we did that every night. And it inspired young children to want to go out there and to play in front of the community. And that's why it was weird. We're a tiny little town, but we were always ranked in the top 20 in the Boston Globe. It's like, why is this town, Medway, always here? It's because they had this. We had it ingrained in us since we were little boys and girls playing, you know, and watching people, watching the high school students play under the lights. So I would love for us to keep that in mind when we separate maybe turf from lights and how lights can bring people together. The last thing I do want to say is around utilization. William, you mentioned that I made that comment last time about getting kicked off the fields. Thank you for bringing that up. I just want to really beg the school board to really think about, if this bond bill gets defeated or if turf is not a part of what the vote's going to be, can we please consider changing the policies so that communities, community members like myself and my son and my daughter and their friends have a place to play? There's no place where we can play soccer. We get kicked off time and time again. So I'm sort of thinking about the backup plan. If it's too expensive, if we can't do it, we just need a place to play. So I'm a huge fan of more sports and less screens, however we go about that. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. It's great to have company, frankly, and the, but these are ideas that we just-
You're a great host, Alex. So come back.
But it's just, we can't get information from any other way but from hearing from you, from your experience, from your observations. And it's, I'm sure we'd all agree, it's extremely informative, and you're always welcome back. And we're going to be releasing the communications plan for how we're going to be presenting the bond to you actively. That's coming up soon. But thank you all for attending tonight. I really appreciate it.
I don't know. I think they should-
It was a very funny moment, genuinely.
Great to see you.
Great to see you. Me too.
Me too.
Are we going to continue? My husband's traveling, so I have to put the kids to bed.
Totally fine. We have a forum.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I mean, we're not, policies are first read. There's just a couple of things-
Say as long as I can, but I'm just like- Need to wait for Bill.
He went to the bathroom, I guess.
Is it?
Is it Bill? No, not Bill.
That's how you start it now because we have to have, we have to have real deal discussions on what to start, what are we adding? I mean, that has to all be done in a week, which might take us a lot of time to work and start the meeting. It's a different kind of meeting.
I've already worked on this.
Right. It's reform, but it's public. Yeah. It's probably what we're going to do.
Yeah, I agree. It's hard to just make-
React to something that's kind of so-
Oh, I saw, I saw. Mics are live, by the way.
Wonder what I'm doing.
So Catherine, feel free. We're going to get the kids going.
I like, I'm 39, 40.
Bill, you're up next. Once you're done mopping.
get Saturday, the closing show is, everybody comes out and is plodded and celebrating, both the cast and the crew, which I think's a really nice touch. Here's the AP Bio Look-In, you can look at this, understand it, and dig into it. This was the addition today, we featured, we tend to have a rhythm to what we do. If things are in the hasting happenings, they don't tend to show up on Tuesday in these reports, but this is big, big news, and whenever we have an opportunity to raise up and celebrate our special ed students, we will do that, because rightly so, some want to be more private about, you know, who they are. But this is an incredible moment to be part of a state committee, state process, and again, this was featured on Friday, went out everywhere, but we brought it back in. At the end of the day, I realized we should, working with Melissa and Cara, realized we should get this in and feature it here.
How do they get selected?
I, they apply, and then I think they go through a process in that regard, so it's quite a nice feature. PALS is a really important partnership we have with the Hastings Police. They're in the high school several days a week, about four hours a day. They still are on duty within Hastings, they still need, they can go out and do what Hastings need if something off-campus happens, but we're part of the village. 1,600 of our most precious people are here during the day, so this is part of the village, and this has gone very, very well. It's a way to build relationships constructively with our students, and there are a number of students that the PAL officers can connect with in ways that some of the rest of us may not necessarily connect. So it's a real plus, and I've only heard compliments about this as I go around. So please let the village leadership, the mayor and others know that Chief is doing a great job to have this be part of what we do here, and, you know, in any given day, 1,600 of our children are here, so having some presence is a plus. So, you know, again, I want to thank the Hastings Police Department for this relationship, it's been here for a while.
Been here for a long time, and it's a great program in school.
And we're looking now to expand into the middle school a little more. So Scott Wynn speaking with Chief about that. And then here's an individual shout-out for athletics, we tend to do team, but this is quite significant, a swimmer verging on state-level accomplishment, so we do feature this here. And, once again, this was tearing up the text with all of you, it's Class C, to be a state champion in any of those four classes in such a big state is incredible. Then this weekend, you know, Caitlin will compete in what's called the Federations Cup, which brings together the four, the champions from the four classes as well as the private school. And as you mentioned, may remember, two weeks ago, she's headed off to Georgia Tech, which is quite a major commitment in the world of running. So this is worth celebrating. Early dismissal, we will put a notice out tomorrow, remind people, I guess at the end of the day, so they don't get confused and think tomorrow's the early dismissal, but it's important we remind people several times about this. And there are your upcoming events, including the next time we meet, and all Alex's friends will show up to give comments. Right? Exactly. Since you're such a great host. All right? So in the agenda, next to this, I don't think it's posted up here, but it is posted in your documents, and this is important, it's in the public record, is something I did send to the board over the weekend, it's something Ken Slence, who's the superintendent of Dobbs Ferry, put together, he titled it "New York Inspires: A Plan to Transform Education in New York State." Ken did a superb job of putting in one place with all the correct and necessary footnotes for major initiatives underway in the state. Melissa Samansky today with the leadership team flagged the graduation measures changed because they now are coming, and there's a timeline, and if you didn't get a chance in the document, the first footnote, footnote one, brings you to a very clear PowerPoint from the NICE Ed as well, the Board of Regents, on what's entailed in the graduation measure changes, the timeline, all the rest, so I would urge you to study that. Next, and there's a lot of detail here, but great clarity on the detail, Ken then went into the regionalization issue. I did have some emails yesterday from parents worried about regionalization, so the word is getting out. I think the worry is, when you hear regionalization, you think, oh, we're now going to have one big quad district, i.e. put all four together, or something like that. We've been told in repeated meetings of superintendents that is not what this is about, this is not about mergers and combining, it's about maximizing us working together to share resources on ideas, even what I'm doing with Ken's work here, you know, to take advantage of his thinking and share that, more deeply the transportation types of things we do, all the rest. There, you know, there's some worry from superintendents who've been here a long time that then you go to foundation aid study, it's item three in this report from, that Ken summarized, and in there you have the potential cut in foundation aid, and you also have the hold harmless going away, which last year were things the governor was espousing, we'll see if that happens now this year. There's some concern that regionalization becomes a way to address lesser money, but they've been, we've been told they're separate. And then lastly here, it speaks in detail to what's called the reimagining, the New York State Accountability System. But this is a time in New York State where these more, quite, a set of major initiatives are coming forward. Witness this document from Ken, a number of superintendents are updating their boards on this work, and as I've mentioned, pretty obviously I've piggybacked on Ken here and given him full credit. It is something I want to keep an eye on, keep talking about. And final comment on the graduation measures, Melissa will be working with a leadership team to actually spend maybe an hour really understanding that, because it does, it will have impact on us in Hastings, so, but I wanted to put in the public record, posted not just all the wonderful photos and images and joy, but also this quite serious set of work coming at us from the state.
Yeah, thank you, Bill, very true, very true. Moving on to business items, are there any questions or comments regarding business items one through eight? Is there a motion to approve business items one through eight?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to placement and services for CSC and CPSE, are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve our placement and services for CSC and CPSE?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. Moving on to personnel as a consent agenda, are there any questions or comments regarding our appointments, our termination, or leaves of absence? Is there a motion to approve our personnel consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. Moving on to minutes, this would have been from our November 6 meeting.
When are you going to bring up Melissa? Later? At what point are you going to put Melissa Hardisty?
Maybe in the board comment section?
Yeah, so let's circle back to that, I'm sorry. So just, we were at minutes, this would be minutes from the November 6 meeting, are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve our minutes from the November 6 meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. Moving on to policy reports, this would have been from the, this is the Policy Committee meeting minutes. I don't know if we're going to go through these at all, but we can, can we go to first read on the-
Well, I think what we want to do, I know if either-
Teresa's not here tonight.
Yeah, right, but it's Dave and Sylvia.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we had built in comments there for you to read or to refer to, I don't know if Dave or Sylvia want to do that, that's under the meeting report.
I don't know if my screen opens, so-
There's a document here-
I'll defer back to Bill. Yeah, there's comments in there, and it's a first read, so, you know, any comments come next time. Or, as Sylvia and I, we can bring it to the Policy Committee.
Yep.
Okay, and these minutes are pretty thorough, so thank you. You took them, right?
No.
Oh, Melissa, thank you.
That's why they're so well put together.
Thank you. So there are minutes posted and contained here. So moving on to the policies for-
Yeah, actually, let me give, because the minutes do speak to, the committee asked us with legal guidance to circle back on policy 2245, which is the student liaison representative policy. So we all know that the governor has now mandated that every school board in the state have that, we've had, we have a policy, other districts have the role and the policy, but we are going to go back and look at, it's a good time to fine-tune the policy, make sure it's very strong and defensible, and the one area we will go back and look a bit is, and you've asked me to do this, is how the students are selected. So we are looking at that, Andy Kleiman is principal, is reviewing that policy, also we'll talk with Steve Lopez, who's been key to the selection of the students, and we will come then to the Policy Committee with some recommendations, and then we'll come back to you. Even though we have time on our side, you need two reads before you make any change, so we do want to keep this moving. So I'm not sure, a December meeting, but no later than January, I think we'd start to bring it forward. But it was very good work from Dave and Sylvia, saying, you know, strongly support how we've been doing this.
Yeah, we can't recollect right now, but essentially what I remember from that one is, we already have an existing policy, but because the state provided the criteria that they want us to follow, that's why we can't, we basically have to modify what we have in existence because it doesn't fit with the parameters that they've now set out. So because that, and that's why Dr. Mcursie was saying, that they basically need to go back to that same, to the criteria, to make sure that the application process is, you know, extensive and comprehensive, so that we have a good selection of students, but also that, you know, that they fit the appropriate criteria of what students can meet that, you know, the requirements that they're asking for.
Couldn't have said it better.
Okay, thank you.
A few words, very few words.
Okay, sorry. Moving on to second public comment?
We have the first reads.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you'd-
Yeah, no, it's a little confusing, because we have the community committee reports on policy, which we did, now it's the first read. So I don't know if board members have questions there for-
It's the memo that we have summarizing the changes, so-
If I may, the committee found these quite straightforward and appropriate on quite, you know, very, very important policies and also adjustments that make sense, and the guidance was either completely with the state guidance and/or modified a bit by our own district attorney. Is that fair? Yep.
Correct.
And again, it's the first read, they would come back next meeting for a second read and vote.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, moving on to second public comment? No, no more public. Moving on to agenda review, this is going to take us into December, so we're looking at December 4.
Yeah, I think it's straightforward. We have pulled off the agenda, the tech update, we do need to fit that back in, there's a very active parent ad hoc group on tech I'm meeting with later this week, and we do technically have to have a tech committee, so we will be re-establishing that, so, but when that update will be, well, we haven't put that quite on the calendar, but some families have written in to me asking when there'll be an update for you on that.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Moving on to Board of Education comments.
So I would like to, I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything, but I'd like to just say something about and acknowledge Melissa Hardisty, the high school assistant principal, who will be finishing her time here on Friday. I've known her for a very long time, I think she came, she came after, let me give you a little history, there, we had a high school principal who got sick, I think, and passed away, and Lou was the assistant principal. We then went through an extensive search, and Lou was selected to be the principal, and then, I think that was in January, I wrote it down, 2009, that's right. And then Melissa was hired, like, that summer, I think, to start the next academic year. And so she's been here for a very long time, 15 years, and I think the two of them became a really very special working team. They just worked really well together, and sort of had, their jobs were different, obviously, but they worked, I think, with each other and shared the same feelings about the high school, about students, about what was important. And I guess the thing when I think about Melissa is, and I'm sorry that she's not here tonight, although for her sake, to have Hatchess through this meeting, I don't think would have been very much fun, but for her, it was for all of us. But I smile when I think about her, because I think that on the outside she could come across as a very tough cookie, and she's really like a marshmallow inside. And I think she really cared deeply for students, and I had little moments when I would sometimes see her interact with students. I mean, my kids were, Lou was the assistant principal for a while for my youngest son, and then he, Sabi graduated in 2009, so we had him for principal for, you know, one semester. So he never, I didn't really have dealings with Melissa, but I would see her kind of, and I was always fascinated by the way she was, because I think she really, I think kids came to really trust her and feel comfortable with her, and know that she really had their backs, even though she might have come across sometimes as a, you know, or, I don't know, maybe they were good cop, bad cop a little bit, but anyway, she, she really was a very strong supporter of students, and she was really in their court, but in a, I think, a really good, thoughtful way about what adolescents, what's appropriate and what adolescents need, which is something I think an assistant principal, that's what their role is, really. So I know for me, and I think for the school and the district, that we're really going to miss her. She's really made a huge contribution here, and I just hope she goes on to this next chapter and spends a lot of time with her dogs, and has a wonderful time, and know that we will be sending her off with very warm wishes and a little bit of a heavy heart.
Well said, well said, thank you. Good observations, too. And yeah, we definitely wish her well, and it's been quite a journey, you know, thank you. Any other Board of Education comments?
Yeah, I also wish Melissa well, and congratulations on her retirement. I had just sort of-
And so she's been here for a very long time, 15 years, and I think the two of them became a really very special working team. They just worked really well together and sort of had, their jobs were different, obviously, but they worked, I think, with each other and shared the same feelings about the high school, about students, about what was important. And I guess the thing when I think about Melissa is, and I'm sorry that she's not here tonight, although for her sake, to have had to sit through this meeting, I don't think would have been very much fun, but for her, it was for all of us. But I smile when I think about her because I think that on the outside, she could come across as a very tough cookie, and she's really like a marshmallow inside. And I think she really cared deeply for students, and I had little moments when I would sometimes see her interact with students. I mean, my kids were, Lou was the assistant principal for a while for my youngest son, and then he, Savi graduated in 2009, so we had him for principal for, you know, one semester. So he never, I didn't really have dealings with Melissa, but I would see her kind of, and I was always fascinated by the way she was because I think she really, I think kids came to really trust her and feel comfortable with her and know that she really had their backs, even though she might have come across sometimes as a, you know, or I don't know, maybe they were good cop, bad cop a little bit, but anyway, she, she really was a very strong supporter of students, and she was really in their court, but in a, I think, a really good thoughtful way about what adolescents, what's appropriate and what adolescents need, which is something I think an assistant principal, that's what their role is, really. So I know for me, and I think for the school and the district, that we're really going to miss her. She's really made a huge contribution here, and I just hope she goes on to this next chapter and spends a lot of time with her dogs and has a wonderful time and know that we will be sending her off with very warm wishes and a little bit of a heavy heart.
Well said, well said. Thank you. Good observations, too. And yeah, we definitely wish her well, and it's been quite a journey, you know. Thank you. Any other Board of Education comments?
Yeah, I also wish Melissa well and congratulations on her retirement. I had just sort of, I guess, a practical matter of our working meetings. I think we're going to need to schedule, like, given the amount of work we have ahead of us, the decisions, the kind of sorting through line items and...
Yeah, that's a good question.
The budgetary, so I think, and I just wanted to reiterate last meeting, I had asked for kind of cut sheets of the top products. I think, like, something to react to would be nice, especially since the turf has come up a bunch of times. So like, what are the top three to five, you know, products? What's the cost range as a starting point on that?
Yeah, some real info, I'm sure that L.A. can get us that stuff.
Well, to that point, I think we're going to have to consider all the options, you know, the turf products, the other, I forget what it's called.
Hybrid.
Hybrid and grass.
Yeah, so just to kind of, because I do want to jump in, because obviously, we do need to, you know, we have a timeline and that's fine, and if we're going to, you know, just as we look at next steps and I have to meet with them on Thursday to kind of go back over, like, what now? You know, because again, everything is, you know, time and all the rest. So I would imagine the next few meetings, we would continue, like, so there's two things, I think, you know, at times, some people will say, well, you know, you're having the facilities committee. Facilities committee, we're like well beyond that, we're in a bond now, right? So the facilities committees that we were having last year, which is the subcommittee, I think, is now like the board as a whole acting in that capacity, which is of course appropriate because you're now no longer just talking about the concepts you're well into, which we've been dealing with for like probably two and a half years or so, like, in the development of this bond. So I do think, you know, one of the pieces, and it was stressed tonight, and I will stress it from our point of view, you know, I think there are components of this work that have to go on the May ballot, you know, I think that does require, if you look at the timeline of the board to, because there are certain aspects that then have to be, even like a bond timeline, even beyond secret, like just looking at the building condition survey and pulling out some of that work that would need to be done, there would need to be a decision on just that aspect of work, latest beginning of January, again, that then has to be folded into something that can be, we have a certain amount of time that we have to put out a bond newsletter and all the rest, and then it has to go fold right into a timeframe and notification, similar to a bond of public notification on the vote, the amount of the proposition, all the rest. So there's some timelines around that. That's where, if you look at their timeline, even if you were to say, we're not prepared, I'm just not saying you are saying that, but if you needed more time, as they said, because as you saw the timeline and as Matt discussed, there's the SECRE requirements and all the rest, and there are those illegal requirements, we do have to bring in other professionals to help in that regard and other things that, for those other two aspects of the work, the addition, and also any type of failed renovation. So I guess my question to you is, you know, I would imagine that even just looking at the BCS work, you would have to dedicate the rest, like, the remainder of your meetings until we start the budget process, we'll all have to include bond work and then anything you, you know, and I would say to be like focused on what those asks are, because again, they are architects and they do work, and there's, as we know, they're bill by hour, and that's fine, and whatever it's going to require, but we do want to make sure that we're, you know, focused and also focused on that timeline. And I do think we will need, I think, I guess, some, I know there was a lot on there, but I think based upon that, are we still looking to have a bond vote in May for all the components? I mean, we definitely have to have a bond vote for, at least, if you look at some of those numbers, and we could debate some of those, like, are the casework and the finishes and the floors requirements in the BCS? I mean, I know how they break out somewhat mechanical and other items on there, so I want to say there might be like eight or nine million dollars worth of like those things, and then maybe, or eight million of those, and then there are some floors and things because we do have asbestos flooring, and it does crack, I would put that in the critical infrastructure category. You know, we can debate whether casework is or not, but I think there are things, and ceiling tiles and all the rest that I think have to be addressed. So I think there is a good 12 to 14 million dollars, or no, excuse, well, with soft costs, like 10 to 12 million dollars that has, that we, somewhere in that range. I mean, maybe we can look at the line by line of what that includes, but that would need to go on the ballot, right? And then the other items you have to, because there is a timeframe in which the board will have to make a recommendation, and it initially was that the bond scope of work would be approved in December.
Right.
For the bond vote, so if there's, if that's not going to be the case.
Well, can I offer a suggestion?
Sure.
And see what you think. I mean, I think Alex, as board president, put down a still important and yet streamlined approach, and if we could work to get a sense of what numbers begin to look like with that, I mean, what's really vital, working from the most vital assets, the BCS pieces, you know, what Maureen, you've identified, what Dave identified is most essential, then run those numbers, run the numbers relative to a single athletic field with lights, because that's always in my mind, those go hand in glove at this day and age, and that could then give you the information, Maureen, also you're looking for, on the different surface options. And then the other would be running the costs on that cafeteria with then what that means in the creation of classroom space. I mean, that, clearly, we're silent on the entranceway issues at this point, but if we were able to come back with that to help then the board begin to understand, that may mean LAN's back in, PVW's back in, to start to help refund, because if the board has that clarity, then it can get to, still on the timeline, can get to, because that's, that still fits the issue of setting the scope.
No, absolutely, but so I think by next week, we would have to look at that, and then I think, you know, kind of understanding the tolerance for number, right? Because there is a piece, there's like the what, and then there may be, I'm just throwing this out there, like, no more than 20, 25, 30 million, whatever the case may be, and as we explained, you know, you look at it so that, you know, for 30 million, you're really buying 20 something million of construction, right? I can tell you right now, just based upon some of the cut sheets, or just actually you have the budgets in there, and if you, just kind of pulling some of those out, I think you are looking turf with lights with, because you would, I mean, even some of the parking and things, that's just ADA compliance, that we are out of compliance right now, so I think some of that is, what was proposed there is like a scale back version of some of other things that were addressed, but I think you are still looking at a good like 6, 6.5, you know, or something like that, because the lighting proposal, well, just because I know the number, because the electric service that would need to be upgraded, it's not, you know, depending where your field is, some of them are like adjacent, right, behind a school, and they can tap into the existing service and all the rest. The upgrade of the service to bring the lights there with field lights, you're talking about like a $2 million number just for that.
Are you coming up against...
Go ahead, no, go.
Are you going to come up against issues for houses that are in the vicinity?
Of course, yes, of course.
So like, that's, is that another piece to this? And is there litigation that they might?
No, there's no litigation. I think typically when school districts have lights, and I mean, obviously, we wouldn't be running them beyond probably 9 o'clock at night or something, you know, there, and it would only be when you're, you know, there's definitely schools when they have them, they discuss, you know, some parameters about use of them and all the rest. So I think, I think absolutely there'd be people, but there's no legal, anything legally that would prohibit us from having them. I mean, other than a lawyer, but I don't, you know, just going through that the last time.
Is there data on the projection, like the light pollution? I don't know. I have no people in the area.
I think, I think, listen, those are things in which once the board agrees to the scope of work, you will have to discuss and have people speak to and talk about the spillage and all the rest, because that's what, the board kind of agreed to the scope of work, and then you talk about all those issues in regards to those type of concerns people may have on those in terms, you know, what would the impact of what they're going to see, or, you know, the posts themselves. I can tell you that people forget, I mean, I know that, like, that's a reality of where you're going to have some concerns from folks that currently don't see a lighting stanchion, I think they're called, and, you know, now they will see it, even whether it's lit or not, right? So I think things like that, you're typically, and that's not just Hastings, I think, in many communities when they're, where we are located, Lower Westchester, they're in neighborhoods, they're not necessarily like off, outside of a, there's homes around where we have fields and things, so I think that'll be the case, but I can tell you, and just running the quick numbers...
The last time there were issues of lights.
I can tell you just quick numbers, and again, nod, having in front of me, I'm just doing a quick, as you would say, Alex, back of the envelope math, you know, you're at 10 million with building conditions survey work, a singular turf field and lights, again, just using like the numbers that I'm looking at on their paper, you're at probably like six or seven million dollars there with, you know, without like a big press box and all the rest, but with bleachers and things that you would, you know, there'd be, like the turnarounds and all the rest that you'd have to include. And then the addition, we see the numbers that are included there, right? And as I stated, I mean, those are pretty clear on that, those cost projections of what, even if you were to remove that front entrance, you are above a 30 million plus off cost right there, just to be clear, like what we're looking at. So I think, you know, there's going to have to be, and I can tell you, if you use the last bond at 18, so that's 30, but with soft costs, you're talking about, I don't know, 45, so, you know, is there a 30? I mean, there's a, like, I think there's, like, to David's question earlier, a $20 million bond will increase taxes probably roughly 1 and 1/2 percent. That's a back of the envelope calculation that I, you know, know based upon previous bonds. So as you double that, right, that's, you know, and then depending, I think, the gentleman tonight spoke about it, you know, and that's probably using an average value household and what that would look like. I mean, there is that piece where we do have debt dropping off in 31, we wouldn't start the bond, this bond, even with the timeline of the vote here, people wouldn't start paying for it till '27, '28, in terms of when it would hit the actual, the payments, because you don't really borrow it, you know, and you borrow a ban, but I'm saying just in terms of like how that, like, long term.
So, you know, I think Bill sort of gave you an answer in terms of how you can work with land right now, where to start from. I feel like there is a lot for everybody here to digest of things that were presented us, questions, things to think about, and I do agree that I think we're going to have to have more meetings, even if we do it in a way where at times, we're not, everybody can come, but we communicate well with each other about them. And, you know, I think that this meeting tonight was actually a very good meeting. I think often meetings when there are a lot of people who come, that can get sort of out of hand, and I never felt like that happened, but, and we heard a lot of different perspectives, and I think it's a lot of food for thought. And I, you all know, I certainly, I don't know where you stand, I certainly have worries about what's going to happen come January and what's going to be happening, and I think, for me, I feel comfortable that we start moving ahead with a plan, knowing that, who knows if we have to revisit things? I mean, we can be very hopeful and optimistic or know that maybe we won't suffer that much from changes in if there's a federal department of education or not, in terms of what comes from the state, where we get our money from now, but, you know, we may have to like do a slight pivot. But I think in the meantime, we have to start planning as if it's going to be something that we can move forward with. But I think we're going to all have to sort through the different pieces of what's necessity and what we would like and what are the options.
So just, just to kind of go back, I think, you know, based upon what I'm hearing, right, unless we're going to add some work sessions between our existing board meetings, well, you know, you'll be unable to come to a decision for a May vote.
I think we should add sessions.
On those items, because there are legal requirements that have to happen before that.
So I hear you saying we should add a work session or two, so we can right now take a shot at staying at that timeline.
Yeah, so the decision would be, I think it's December 16th that the board approves the scope of work.
What we can do is that Melissa D. can...
So a question, and this might be kind of out there, but I feel like the turf field is, is going to, it generates more interest on both sides, and it was very helpful to hear, you know, it was very kind of pleasant dialogue, and, you know, there's differences of opinion on both sides. I feel like that kind of deserves a little more time. Is there a way to sort of give an allowance for purpose of the budget for that specifically? Buy us some time so that we have more discussion on it, kind of using that number, let's make it 5 million, I'm just making it up, while we kind of hear more from the, you know, constituents on that?
So to do the SECRE, they need to know what, what field you're putting, what, you know, I think, I mean, I wouldn't, I mean, I think right now, if we were not to delay doing the turf for now, like, we would then take a much longer approach to like the plan, right? Because I think without turf, we would likely not do lights.
It seemed like there was people saying lights aren't a requirement either way, right?
No, but I think, I think in terms of like grass fields, we have to rest them now, so I can't see, like, putting on, I mean, unless, I mean, we can discuss that further, I'm just saying, I don't know if it'd be worth to spend like, you know, two to three million dollars on putting lights on a grass field that we'd have to rest, you know, so...
So you can't use your...
Yeah, again, that's just based on not mine, like, what, some concerns about the use, current use of it, so I think that's, yeah.
I hear the board committing to, at least, we'd get forums for a work session or two so we can, and then we'd start, Maureen, coming back, we'd sit with LAN, come back with a fine tuned, you know, approach, and that, on any number of the pieces of this, so for example, the turf, the kind of things Maureen's asking for, they're interacting with the one idea that was at the mic today, you know, so you'll hear some options on that, so we still can move along to take a shot at a decision on the timeline we have.
Yeah, so it's...
Could we do a work session where we just talk about the fields and the different options and pros and cons?
Let's see what LAN can, let's find out what LAN...
But can I, I mean, this is just for my own, you know, I think, I think, as I think about it, I think the money's the bigger issue than the, I mean, the...
But I, what I'm hearing is the work is leading to the money, so once we...
No, not on the field, just on the total project.
No, what I'm saying is, but I think if we do Alex's model, cost that out, because then we can, that may be too big a number, we just pull that back down. I don't, I, I mean, unless the board disagrees, I don't, I'm not sure you want to set a number up here unless you know what it is exactly.
That the money's for.
Right, I think we had, it's a...
Yeah, I mean, bottom line, we have a work session, and it's...
I mean, I don't personally feel committed yet to a turf field. I mean, you may think that tonight, there was a lot of support for turf. Just wait.
Well, I mean, that kind of goes to, if we do have a session just on that, we definitely want to get the word out and, and have kind of an open forum to hear people out on it, now.
The public wouldn't participate.
Okay, because I think...
But you need meetings to be able to move the...
Yeah.
Well, I think you, right, you need time to talk as a board to determine, I mean, Maureen's concern is what's your appetite for an upper number? I mean, you may feel right now, you can determine an upper number, but I'm hearing from a number of you is it's hard to do that unless you know what it is you're buying.
Yeah, right.
And even an outline of what you're buying. Right now, you're saying you don't want to buy 64 million or whatever it is, it's a lesser number, but then now is, what would be the costing out of the streamlined approach that Alex has laid out, the single field with lights, the cafeteria piece, and what's that lead to? It may be the back of envelope that...
Yeah, it's like 45 million.
But then that tied in with the other, then you can say, then some estimates on what that's going to cost per household, and we actually lay it all out on that, you know, some lists and all, and help you see that, but that, we'd have to say get a work session next week, and we'll see what LAN can come back with to talk about all that.
Well, I know that they just told me tonight they are not, like, that's why I have to meet with them this week, they're not available next week, but they would be available the week after, you know, which we already have a board meeting on that day.
So we have to just turn that, I think we substant, that's, right now, there's almost nothing else on the agenda, I think we just need to focus.
But then it would need to be like either the, which is the fourth, and we'd have to have like three board meetings in a row, I think, in order to, if you were even considering making the date in December so that they could start submitting that paperwork. I mean, even tonight, they actually had that they wanted to start the secret paperwork tomorrow, if you look at their timeline, so we may be off, you know, anyway, but I just, I just needed to know for myself, because I think the numbers are also very large, too, to deal with, you know.
So why don't we plan for meetings every week in December?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's what we got to do.
Is that what you're going to say?
No. I mean, there's also, like, there's two models that are given here, but there's also, you know, like...
Neither of those models, I think, are the ones they're speaking to, it would be a different model.
Yeah, even looking at this, like, I like this, this bottom field, it's a mixed use baseball, football, but why can't this model be with the, with the other one with the, with the grass baseball field without the extra, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
There's like ways to...
Yeah, likely, I think, with...
Because this two field looks like the most expensive.
Yeah.
This is one combined field.
That's actually more expensive on the right.
This is more expensive?
Yeah. What it would likely be, be one field conversion.
All the drawings, too, in the previous.
There were, so the one field, the two, that what they're showing in this presentation, which they cross out, is like something that, that would have a two field kind of approach to it, and then there are different numbers that are assigned to either. The other option is one that they, that actually we previously kind of looked at when we started our process, we were only really looking at one, and then I think they wanted to provide a holistic approach similar... a holistic approach, similar to what PBDW did, kind of like, understanding, like, that's gonna be super expensive anyway, so I didn't think, you know.
And we're not in the place that this core model, but we want that. I assume everyone is sorted in agreement.
The what, Matt?
The core.
The infill. I mean, the infill's not a big part of the overall cost.
I think Irvington got rid of theirs already, didn't they?
Yeah, they did. It's not, that's more of a smaller cost, you know.
If you put that proper infill, that's gonna be the seal of death on this.
Yeah, I mean, but from pricing perspective-
The seal of death will be if you put that-
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, I don't think-
I think a community will absolutely not.
Yeah, but I think that's part of, I think we ask, if we've, if you have a meeting, your next board meeting, we will turn that over totally to bond work, other than whatever business or personnel items are there to get voted on, and, and know that after that, you have some intensive work to determine, do we meet the deadline to continue now? And if, if, working with that only end, they can come back with a good degree of guidance on a number of these things, you may know enough then as to, what's your appetite for that total number, is Maureen's asking, and then if it's too high, what are, what are you pulling out of it?
Right.
And you, you may say, you gotta pull the field out now, or something, or, you know, whatever, but I, that-
The work sessions are all just public, or?
Yes.
Why, everything you do has to be, you know, an exact session, everything's in public. The issue in a work session, there isn't the public comment type times. But that would be a regular board meeting with, with public comment. I mean, I would suggest you position the public comment after there's been a presentation and you've had some discussion. So, all right, is that?
Yeah, that makes sense. Could I ask if Alex could, what would make sense for me is, like, this page is kind of like the running tab of everything. Your scope that you said, like, let's narrow it down, like, could you tell us, not now, but for the next meeting?
Well, let's start.
Like, what's not, like, what is excluded?
I want to go through it.
Okay, that, I mean, I think, just so, and then we have a number associated with what you're saying. I mean, turf is in here as a much bigger number, I think. It's two turf fields, so I think that number is-
Yeah, just do like, half of that.
Twice, I don't know, but, so just so we know where we're starting from numerically, I think that would be a good sample.
Because that's really the only thing that you suggested to change, was bring it to one. So that's why I said, if you take that number and put it in half, and then everything else remains, that's the number.
But not during the entrance.
Could it be for turf, or for grass, or for hybrid?
In the entrance, yes, 2 million.
You pull back.
Yeah, 1.5 million.
None of the costs are in operation.
For masonry, is it, I mean?
We're gonna have to put at least, because what, none of what they discussed tonight is on there. If you look at their, their sheet, and they didn't get into the particulars, but in year one, you'll notice that they're, they're saying about 500,000 of capital needs. That is what has to be funded, or a good amount of it in the budget next year. So as an example, currently, we put about 200 and change in the budget. I think this year it might have been, maybe it was like 2 something, 250, I can, too tired right now to remember. But it, it is, you know, a lot of districts are usually put about a million dollars or so in there, because that, you know, with, with the amount of buildings we have, and that's something that just even long-term, we have to consider kind of building that base into there, because it is important so that, you know, the bonds then aren't as large either.
Yeah. I have to run, actually.
Yes.
So, we can, we can pick this all up in a work session, which is gonna be freewheeling, it's gonna be just like this, but just-
Well, let me, I'll put a, I think that what Maureen and I will do, when we're gonna meet with LAN, and I'll join that meeting if you want, it's Thursday.
Morning, yep.
Thursday morning, and we'll say, could you caught, fine tune the cost for the streamlined version, and then for the turf, clear options on the different surfaces and all that, try and have enough information at this next board meeting, sets you up to begin to make really bite the bullet.
Substitute, yeah, progress.
Because then you'll know the work relative to the cost, and you may well do that. All right? And that then, all right?
All right, thank you. So, is there a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you for staying.